All right, the time is now 6:00 PM. Our regular city council meeting for August 19, 2025 is now in session. First on the agenda is Councilmember Westbrook will lead us with the opening prayer and the pledges allegiance to the flags of the United States and the state of Texas.
Good evening. Heavenly Father, as we gather this evening, let us acknowledge that this is ultimately the beginning of election season, a time when ideas and visions for our community come forward. We ask for your guidance to keep our hearts centered on leadership rooted in service, unity and positivity. Reminds remind us that true leadership is not about power, but about influence through integrity and care. We look to examples from scripture like Moses who led with humility and a heart for heart for the people and Nehemiah who rebuilt with vision, courage and perseverance. May we follow their examples in our own roles, working not for ourselves, but for the good of those we serve. Grant us wisdom in our decisions, respect in our dialogue and strength to lead with purpose and compassion. May everything we do tonight reflect your will and bring benefit to our city in your holy name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag, allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you, Councilmember Westbrook. August 2025 is the National Emergency Management Awareness Month, and we have a proclamation to be read. And Councilmember Westbrook will be reading the proclamation, and if I can have the representatives, please join us up here at the podium.
Whereas emergency and disasters can occur unexpectedly, posing significant threats to life, property and the environment. And whereas local emergency managers, emergency managers across all sectors, community leaders, Texas diversion, Division of Emergency Management and the Federal Emergency Management Agency dedicate countless hours to developing preparedness, response, recovery and mitigation programs to protect the lives and property of all persons living in the United States and US territories. And whereas emergency managers across United States and US territories are charged with establishing and maintaining the capabilities necessary to effectively direct, coordinate and support emergency and disaster response and recovery efforts. And whereas the mission areas of prevention, protection, mitigation, response and recovery align with the core capabilities identified in the national preparedness goal. And whereas emergency managers serve the nation by responding to countless emergencies and disasters each year, demonstrating commitment, compassion and professionalism in protecting the public. And whereas the efforts of our nation's emergency managers have helped millions of community members across the United States recover, rebuild and become more resilient in the face of adversity. Now therefore Ralph Gutierrez, the mayor of Shirts does hereby proclaim August 2025 as National Emergency Management Awareness Month. Throughout this city in conjunction with National Preparedness Month observed in September with the support of International Association of Emergency Managers, the National Emergency Management Association, the big city emergency managers. He urges all community members to express their sincere appreciation for emergency managers in every sector who work diligently to prepare, protect and serve our cities, counties, states, tribes, territories, regions and organizations against all hazards and risk.
Chief for choice.
I will go first because this is not about what I have to say about that. I'm going to let you speak to that. I'd like to take a moment while we do recognize all emergency managers all across, you know, not just our region, the state of Texas and the country. I want to take a moment to specifically thank this guy because he does an incredible amount of work. I can't express how lucky and fortunate we are to have it. He supports everyone and every everything in this city and the region and the state. And I'm very thankful that he's on our team.
All right, well, now I'm going to speak to it broadly as the field and the enterprise as a whole, right? Emergency management. First of all, I'd like to thank the mayor and the council members, the city staff who I work with every single day and of course the residents who we serve, right? Specifically to recognize this month is Emergency Management Awareness Month. It's very, very new as we have more disasters, natural versus manmade emergencies within our community that become more complex. The field of emergency management has been brought to light more so than in years past. So I'd just like to thank all of you for doing that. So what is emergency management, right? Let's talk about that. So big thing is we are problem solvers, right? We are the ones that you call 24/7, 365 when you have an issue or a incident that occurs that needs resolution or coordination between agencies, departments, states, right? Emergency management is that person. So we help communities just like ours, right? Corporations understand their risk, right? Build resilience and navigate through crises and know what to do when disaster strikes before it happens. We are your neighbors, right? Just like everyone else. We serve small communities. We serve large jurisdictions. We advise corporations, nonprofits, government agencies. We work in schools, hospitals, universities, private business. We are the chief risk advisors for those organizations that we serve. And what we specifically do right is help them to prevent, mitigate, prepare for and recover from any type of disaster. We usually, right? Always know who to call, and I promise you that I do standing here today. We anticipate needs before they occur, right? And we are rarely caught off guard. We, emergency managers stand ready before, during and after the disaster. We are disaster professionals, right? We bridge the gaps between agencies, business and local communities, nonprofits to build resilience. We connect resources, foster collaboration and ensure that when crises do occur, that we respond in a seamless and effortless manner in the most efficient way possible. Now we are just more than the lights and sirens or the suit that you see me wearing here today, which I typically don't wear. Thanks to everyone who noticed tonight. We write coordinate across all 16 critical infrastructure sectors, which I'm sure many of you don't even know, and I'll spare you reading them off, but that puts me behind a desk. It puts me in the field. It puts me on top of a dam. It really, the spectrum of this is massively broad, right? So working with all of those individuals is an absolute pleasure and it is so to work here for the city of shirts. And within right, the national and state framework of emergency management. We all speak the same language, right? Refer to the same plans. Everything is coordinated. That is our responsibility. So this, uh, this month, once again, I'd like to thank the mayor, council, staff and all of you here who had to listen to me. So thank you very much.
You know, as, as he was saying, we, he kept saying, we, because it's not about I or anything like it. It's we, we need to get, if an emergency occurs, we need to get back to normal as quickly as we can. And that is what the emergency management does is, is try to get us back on our feet, not just our city, our community in this area. Thank you so much. Appreciate it. Okay. Next on the agenda is the announcements of upcoming events.
Thank you, Mayor. This Sunday, August 24th, Parks is hosting the Owl Prowl. That's from 8:30 PM to 9:30 PM at Crescent Bend Nature Park, 12805 West Schaefer Road. All ages welcome. Just as a reminder for folks, city offices will be closed Monday, September 1st for Labor Day. And the next council meeting is the next day, Tuesday, September 2nd, back here at 6:00 PM in council chambers.
All right. The announcements and recognitions by our city manager, Mr. Williams.
No announcements tonight, Mayor. Thank you.
Announcements and recognitions by the mayor. I haven't done it this time, so we'll move on. Next on the agenda is a hearing of residents. This time is set aside for any person who wishes to address the city council. Each person is limited to three minutes, and we ask before addressing the council, for the record, please state your name and address. Now we do have a couple of public hearings scheduled today, and you do have a choice. You may speak during the hearing of residents or hold off on your comments until the public hearing, or you may speak at both. That option is yours. Mayor Pro Temp, please. Car, first speaker.
Good evening, Dee Cruz.
Greetings, Mayor and City Council Members. My name is Dee Santa Cruz. I am with Greater Randolph Youth Soccer Association out of Shirts, Texas. Graysa has proudly served the community from Shirts for, from Shirts Soccer Complex for the last 20 years. As discussed before and proposed before, our proposal ensures Shirts Soccer Complex continues fulfilling its original role as a soccer complex without adding the financial strain to the city. We are requesting the same courtesy only extended to BVYA. Graysa arranged tournaments and thousands of games played at SSC. Graysa provides a streamlined solution with the red, without the red tape and bureaucracy often associated with the city run complexes. To clarify, field operations involve far more than what just watering and mowing. They require ongoing conditioning flexibility, including reconfiguring fields based on updated tournaments and regi- and registrations, adjusting schedules weekly, managing traffic control, rotating fields to prevent excessive wear and consulting with experts when needed, when delays happen due to weather or cancellations or other issues. This level of responsiveness is essential for assuring tur- ensuring tournaments run smoothly and for max maintaining shirts reputation to host the very best tournaments that San Antonio can offer. Graysa is prepared and capable of fulfilling this responsibility. We ask for your trust, your partnership and your support so we can continue doing what we do best, serving the community through soccer while calling Shirts Soccer Complex our homes. Thank you for your time.
Next up, Robert Sheridan.
Greetings, Mayor and City Council Members. I won't elaborate on what Ms. Dee Santa Cruz had stated, but I know this evening, agenda number 12, resolution 25R111 and the determination of the Shirts Soccer Complex. I just want to, you know, that you guys consider an amendment to allow us an opportunity to, um, to service the complex. As it appears now is just a one-way solution, um, which is city controlled. So just want to point that out and hopefully that you'll take this consideration. Thank you and have a good day.
Next, Henry Fonnart.
Good evening, Council. I'm Henry Fonnart. I'm Vice President of the Police Association for Shirts, and I just want to address y'all. Honorable members of the city council, on behalf of the Shirts Police Association, we respectfully bring forward our concern regarding the risk of falling behind on the recommended employee cost index adjustments for another year. History has shown that when past leadership failed to keep pace with ECI, the results were detrimental to staffing levels, recruitment and retention of qualified officers. The significant pay adjustment you've approved three years ago corrected the problem and allowed us to rebuild. Today's staffing levels are healthy and competitive pay has substantially broadened our applicant pool. For the first time in years, Shirts is attracting highly qualified candidates, including applicants from larger cities such as San Antonio. This progress is a direct result of your leadership and commitment to the competitive compensation. We fully recognize the importance of fiscal responsibility and sound budgeting in the best interests of our citizens. At the same time, public safety is a core responsibility of government and our citizens deserve nothing less than excellence in this area. We are proud that the shirt, that Shirts was recently named the safest suburb of San Antonio and ranked number nine in the entire state alongside benchmark cities such as Frisco, Cedar Park, Georgetown. These achievements demonstrate what, what is possible when we maintain competitive pay and adequate staffing. To sustain this level of excellence and to continue improving, Shirts cannot afford to repeat the mistakes of the past. Falling behind on ECI adjustments would once again jeopardize the staffing, morale and recruitment at a time when other cities in the region are act- are actively investing in their police departments. We strongly encourage you to support a modest increase in the tax rate if necessary to fund competitive pay adjustments. Doing so is not only an investment in our police officers, but also the safety, security and quality of life of every resident of Shirts. We have researched compensation, ECI adjustments in neighboring, in neighboring jurisdictions as well as those benchmark cities mentioned above, and we will be happy to share this data with you at your request. Respectfully, Shirts Police Association. Thank you.
Richard Kuntz.
My name is Richard Kuntz. Reside at 2960 Red dip. I'm going to basically piggyback off a little bit of Vice President Frank Hannert's speech. Also just so you know, I represent myself as a citizen of the city, but also as the treasurer of the Shirts Police Association. I want to bring up ECI and a little bit of information from the Federal Reserve report from the Dallas office regarding San Antonio. Report dated July 24th, 2025. San Antonio economic indicators, wage rise of 8.6% from July of 2024 to July of 2025. Texas overall was 4.8% and the nation was 3.8%. There's been a decline in the unemployment rate in the San Antonio area. So unemployment rate now in the area is 3.5%. Employment growth was 1.6 for the na- for the non-farm employment for the San Antonio area over that same year period. These are all positive indicators of growth in the economy and also for wages and making competition more stiff to find and hire good candidates and retain good employees. These are considerations that I urge you to take into account when you're looking at what you're going to do with the tax rate and what you're also going to consider for an economic or ACI for the citizens or the employees of the city. As Mr. Fannert explained or mentioned, you know, we want to avoid the past mistakes that we've made as a city regarding the UCI and the detrimental effects that occur. These effects, of course, do not occur overnight. They're slow and sometimes they're hard to recognize until they become a breaking point. Some of these breaking points that I can point to were 2014, where we saw a significant number of employees leaving and finding it very difficult to find and hire candidates. Again, 2018, same scenario. The city on each time had to make a correction. And again, here, a few years ago, the city made another correction again because they realized that we were bleeding good employees and it was hard to find candidates. We don't want to backslide. It's hard. It's a hard decision to have to raise a tax rate, to have to decide what you're going to do with the budget. It's not easy. I do not envy any of you, and I respect the decisions, no matter what you make either way. But the short-term gain that we might get by trying to save people some money on their tax rate and also what we can do possibly by not raising the ECI is far outweighed to the long-term costs. Thank you.
Yeah, we've got Maria Fishback and Robert Fishback that are going to combine their time.
All right, Mr. Fishback, you will be allowed at six minutes.
Good evening, Robert Fishback. My address is 140 Dewfall Trail in Siblo. I'm Mayor Gutierrez, council members and city leadership. I was prompted to come before you tonight as a result of a job posting for the senior center supervisor. And it was posted on the 8th of August and has since been removed, but I felt it was important for me to come before you to, I guess, sell myself. So this role as a super, as a supervisor of the senior center is not simply just an employment opportunity. To me, it's, it's a calling and that is something I, I feel very strongly with. I've been drawn into a life of service, especially since en- entering the diaconate to become a deacon in the Catholic Church. And this calling has been rooted in compassion, humility and stewardship. I see this position not only as administrative, but truly as a ministry, a chance to walk alongside our seniors to encourage them, to listen to them and to make sure that every single member feels respected and valued. And that is much of what they expect. So I had the privilege of serving in that position previously, and if you allow me, I'd like to just kind of go over the situation for those who were not on council and just kind of explain what happened. So I chose to resign from the YMCA and this position because I was placed in a situation where it would have compromised my integrity and my character. This is something I, I could not do. I wouldn't allow it. Integrity must always be first. I served in the Air Force and the first core value is integrity first. I share this only for clarity, but my purpose here is moving forward to seeing how that I can collaborate with the city of shirts to be an instrumental, instrument of pastoral care and love for our seniors and in the senior center. If approved, my priority would be just ensuring that this transition, if approved, is seamless. And as I found to, uh, to understand, the seniors especially do not like a lot of upheaval. And I'm hoping that if given this opportunity to serve again, I will be able to prevent that. Many of the members, so they rely on the center solely for faith, interaction with people, activities and support. They deserve stability and I am providing the opportunity for me to provide that to them. And I've already earned their trust when I served in that capacity earlier. In fact, along with my resume, I'm going to provide you with letters of recommendation and support from several of our members because they understand that with me comes compassion and understanding and patience with them. With 20 years active duty service in the Air Force, another 18 years as a civil servant and a deep commitment to this community, I assure you I bring both professional experience as well as a personal dedication that's required for this role. In closing, I just want to emphasize that this position is not simply a job I'm seeking. I'm retired. I don't need the job, but I feel called to it to serve again and to serve our seniors. It is a ministry and a calling, and I feel that I'm ready to serve in that role again. Our seniors deserve leadership rooted, rooted in stability, compassion and integrity, and I'm ready to provide that. I would greatly appreciate the opportunity to speak one-on-one to the city leadership as well as any of you individually who would like to discuss how I can further assist you with the transition. I just simply ask, respectfully ask for your consideration, allow me to serve in this again, and I stand ready to serve with the same dedication and the principles that have guided me through my career and my life. I thank you for your time. May I, may I approach?
Yes, if you can hand those over to me. Thank you.
Hey, Bob Jamison.
Bob Jamison, 4504 Brush Creek Drive. I've been a citizen and a taxpayer. Mr. Mayor said earlier, we should be a city of "we" and not "I." Right now, I feel like an "I" in this city. I have a development going in behind my residence. I understand we need development. It brings in income, tax dollars, everything as such. The concern I have is that I have a 50-ton bulldozer with a ripper 20 yards from my back door going through five foot of limestone. I never, in all my years, especially since I've retired, this was not my goal, to sit in my living room with earplugs in while this dozer tears everything apart. My house is built on this limestone. I have videos, recordings of the noise and the vibrations going through my home. The walls are shaking, the windows shake, you can hear other things shaking, and it's I don't know if there's much you can do for me, but maybe I can do something for my fellow citizens here in regards that maybe this never happens to them. I've called the police in regards to the matter. I've spoken with the Assistant City Manager numerous times, and everybody tells me, "We're on your own." Well, here I am. I'm asking you, what can you do for us, we, the citizens of this city and this nuisance? Thank you.
One question for you. What subdivision is that? I'm sorry, I didn't catch the subdivision.
Pardon, sir?
The subdivision where the work is being done.
Oh, it's Forest Ridge.
Forest Ridge? Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Next up, Karen Jamison.
As you know, there's really, there's absolutely nothing dividing our subdivision and this construction that's going on except for a wrought iron fence. There's been nothing to alleviate the noise or the dust. We are pretty much denied the use and enjoyment of our backyard. We can't go out there. There's no privacy. It's so loud that you have to wear ear protection. Can't breathe because of smoke. I've got videos of all of this as well. There certainly should have been some things done, I think, on their part, and I don't know, you know, exactly what the city could require of them or maybe future developments, but there has been, like I've seen other developments that have these big, you know, wraparounds to try and protect the properties, and there's just nothing there. I mean, it's literally going on in our backyard. We've sent videos to people, and they're like, "Oh, my God, you know, I can't believe that's happening." So like Bob said, we've been told it's just pretty much up to us to document these things. Not only is it emotionally draining for us because this starts at 7:00 every day and lasts till 5:00, we're retired, so where are we supposed to go? What are we supposed to do? Our neighbor is also retired. The other people that are backing up to it are either retired or they work from home. So they're all having the same issue. And maybe, you know, the contractors told us the city approved this. They've known it for a year. We were not notified of anything, you know, to prepare us for it. I don't know what we could have did besides leave, but it's just something that we are going to try and help other people avoid going through this. It's very, I can't even explain to you how it feels every day to hear these noises and not be able to go out in your own backyard. I mean, how would you feel if you were denied the use and enjoyment of your own backyard? So I appreciate your consideration for future developments in our city because this one is just not working out. Thank you.
That's it, Mayor.
All right, thank you. We have a presentation. It's a workshop of the Shirts Historical Preservation Committee's Heritage Neighborhood Street Sign Project. Mr. James.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm up here for just a moment, and that is to pull the PowerPoint presentation up and introduce to you Maggie Tinnerington, who you know as the President of the Chamber, but as you also know, she is the Chairperson of the Shirts Historical Preservation Committee. And just to set the stage, as you know, that committee develops a work plan every year, a number of items they want to accomplish. Many of you have probably been to the trivia events they've hosted or to the scavenger hunt that they've hosted, read the articles that they put out in Shirts Magazine and other places. And this is a project we're really excited about, so I'll turn it over to Maggie and let her cover it.
Thank you, Brian. Good evening, council. Maggie Tinnerington, Chair of the Shirts Historical Preservation Committee. And Brian, I think I have a clicker.
Just page down it, sorry.
Page down it? This one?
Yep.
Okay, fantastic. So this is some of my committee members that are present here tonight, and obviously we've all worked very, very hard. I would have to say Roz kind of led the charge here, being the longest-running and standing member of our committee, but we're so excited because with the heritage neighborhoods that we have, we want a consistency, we want them recognized. And so what we're looking at is, we worked with Public Affairs to use the colors of the city and the logo, the updated logo, not the one with the little jet shooting out, but just a nice, clean sign, but also a sign that recognizes that that is a special neighborhood, that is an old neighborhood. And so this is the look that we came up with. We want to thank Councilman Guerrero and Councilman Westbrook. They are also sitting on the committee for some feedback they gave us and just being a part of this whole process. But this aesthetic, it's simple, it has color, it stands out, and as a team, we were just so pleased about how this came out, and a lot of thanks to Public Affairs for helping us get this look. Now, this is the first neighborhood that we want to put the signs up in, and it's Aviation Heights. And right now, if you drive through there, you'll see some banners that are there, you'll see some old street signs, maybe a couple of new signs. This will make it all aesthetically pleasing and all united. And so where the red areas are, are the boundaries where we'd like to stick the signs in. I mean, at a minimum, and I don't know, Brian, oh, Brian, sir, how many signs we'd be, an estimate of talking about, but definitely ones coming into the neighborhoods. I don't know what the necessity is of having it on every corner, and I'd leave that up to the wisdom of the City of Shirts and the gentleman putting up the signs for us. But this is the start, and these are the boundaries. Randolph Boulevard, Oak Street, Curtis Street, and to the north of Aviation Street. The next section we'd like to do would be Old Schaefer. That is on FM 78 at First Street, all those old homes that went up. I believe the First Street churches included in that area, is it not? But we feel like these two neighborhoods really mark the historic preserving of what Shirts was and what it is now, and just wanting to tie it all in together with signage that looks unique, that is, again, aesthetically pleasing, but definitely stands out that this is a neighborhood that we want to go through and see. And besides that, that is our presentation.
All right, thank you.
Maybe just real quick, if I can, Mayor, I think, you know, we kind of talk about this a lot. So the plan is, as Maggie noted, is we're going to, the idea is to put up the new-style street sign, which is what you see at the bottom, right? That's the new model that's going up in new subdivisions. And then what we would do is the topper that goes on top of that. So just if you haven't seen those before, it's the typical-style street sign with the topper recognizing the historic neighborhood. As Maggie said, in terms of the number, it would be really every intersection, right? Wherever we have a street sign, we would do these. The other part of it that we want to do is while we're out there doing this, we want to do a bit of a refresh as well. So the idea is to do all-new poles, all-new hardware, everything like that, right? What we don't want to go is put a new sign and the street topper on equipment that looks old, if you will. So the idea is to make a real splash with it, and our Public Works folks would do this in-house.
Thank you, Mr. James. All right, council, questions? Councilmember Westbrook.
Yes, Mayor, I just want to recognize that how much, how much time and effort the Shirts Historical Committee put into this project. Certainly Roz took the lead, but Lauren and Becky Babcock and others and Brian James all did their due diligence. And then this whole year, Councilman Guerrero has really stepped up to provide his input. So they've done a tremendous amount of work. I think they created a great product, and I support their efforts in moving forward with the street signs.
I, council, the screen is not working, so if you'd like to speak, Councilmember Guerrero?
Yeah, I just wanted to say that it's a good idea to do the signs because people, when they come and visit Shirts, they're going to know that this is a historic area, and you guys picked out two neighborhoods. But yeah, it's a great idea to do this. It stands out the neighborhood, and it brings history to it.
Councilmember Brown?
Again, I concur as well, and I think it's a great, great way to add consistency to our brand, if you will, especially with the older neighborhoods down there. Get rid of the floppy signs and whatnot, and hopefully, you know, it's going to flow with the Main Street themes as we move forward and maybe give a little extra pride of ownership for the folks that live down there. Great idea.
Council, any other comments?
Mayor, with your indulgence, may I just add one last thing?
Yes.
This was the only way that we could do this because we have to be sneaky, but I had already mentioned somebody who had done a lot of hard work on here, and I want to bring Roz up here. Roz, yes, you. She is the longest-standing member. She spearheaded this, and without her input and her expertise and everything that she has put forth, she's been going on eight years, almost nine. And what we did, we just, we just did a little certificate for her, just recognizing that we couldn't have done what we've done. She's actually also spearheading the calendar that we're finally going to get out for the City of Shirts. Yeah, a historical calendar. But just basically, it just says she's encouraging the preservation of our history. We want to, you know, just recognize the dedication of all her years of continuing service and that she's still going. You can't leave just because we're doing this, but since 2017. So thank you so much, Roz. Thank you.
Thank you. You know, I love Shirts.
There you go.
No.
Yes.
Oh, my gosh. Yeah, I love Shirts. It's a great little town, and I want people to be proud of it, and I hope y'all will approve these street signs. We got something else coming down the road, too, for Shirts. So we're always thinking, you know, and we want y'all to be proud of Shirts.
Well, no, thank you for your time, your dedication, and for what you do to preserve the history of our city. One of these days, some people are going to see it, and it's a testament of what's going on now, will people realize in 50 years that you were a big part of this.
Well, I want people to learn about Shirts, how it was. And there are people still across on the other side of the railroad tracks, they have a lot of stories.
Oh, I heard some of those stories.
Interesting stories, and they're fascinating. So I enjoy it. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Could we get a picture with you really quick?
Probably.
Yeah.
We're not getting out of this, Roz.
Bye-bye.
Next on the agenda is Concerned Agenda Items. These are considered self-explanatory and information packets were provided to council and available for public viewing. These items require no separate discussion unless requested by council. Item number one, the minutes for the regular meeting on August 1st and August 25th. Item number two, Resolution Number 25R085. Item number three, Resolution Number 25R0109. Item number four, Resolution Number 25R104. Item number five, Resolution Number 25R105. Item number six, Resolution Number 25R107. Item number eight, Resolution Number 25R103. And item number eight, Resolution Number 25R108. Council, do any of these need to be removed for separate action? See none? Is there a motion to approve Concerned Agenda Items 1 through 8?
So moved.
Second.
Have motion made by Councilmember Hayward, second by Councilmember Watson. And council, since the board is not working, we'll start off the, we'll start off the vote with Councilmember Hayward.
Yay.
Councilmember Brown?
Yes. Aye.
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 We have seven ayes, no objections. Motion passes. All right, we have a public hearing. Item number nine.
Yay.
Resolution Number 25R112. Conduct a public hearing and consider a resolution accepting a petition for voluntary annexation of approximately 4.7 acres of Bear County property identification numbers 310108 and 1061511, Bear County, Texas. Ms. Delgado, floor is yours.
Good evening, Mayor, council. This is for Resolution 25R112, accepting a petition for annexation of approximately 4.7 acres. Emily Delgado, Planning Manager. Before I jump into the presentation, I just want to make sure that it's very clear, this is not associated with the item later on in the agenda for the special election and that topic that Brian will be covering later. This is actually for a property owner that is requesting to be annexed into the City of Shirts. So here is that subject property, the approximately 4.7 acres. To get your bearings, this is FM 1518 Crossvine, and the Aviator 1518 apartment complex is here, so you'll see those two green parcels. So the current property owner, the Society of St. Pius, has actually requested to be annexed into the City of Shirts. Their end goal is to build a church on this property, and they would like to be in the city limits and go through our process. So the approval of Resolution 25R112 does not annex the subject property. This simply allows for city council to annex the property by ordinance of the future. This is that first initial step. The annexation and zone change ordinances, if this resolution is passed, are tentatively scheduled to be heard at the October 14th City Council with the zoning application that accompanies the annexation to be heard by the Planning and Zoning Commission on the September 3rd meeting. Staff recommends approval of Resolution 25R112, accepting the petition for voluntary annexation of the 4.7 acres.
Right, thank you, Ms. Delgado. Is the applicant here? Would he like to address the council? All right, all right, this is a public hearing. The time is 6:45. If there are any, if there's anyone in attendance who would like to address the council, the microphone is available. Anyone, any takers? Going once? Going twice? Right. Public hearing is closed, 6:45. Council, questions? See none? Okay, Councilmember Brown?
I was just going to make a motion that we approve Resolution 25R112. Second.
Have motion made by Councilmember Brown, second by Councilmember Hayward. Any other comments? All right, we'll start the vote. Councilmember Brown?
Aye.
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 Aye. Aye. Sorry.
Aye.
Okay, we have seven ayes, no objections. Motion passes. All right, we'll move on. We have item number 10, Resolution Number 25R077. Authorizing an agreement for the rump property for drainage right-of-way and Eastman acquisitions and reimbursement and to acquire drainage right-of-way Eastmans from SEUCISD. Mr. James?
Thank you, Mayor. Again, the resolution before you authorize this, the city to enter into a couple of related agreements. One is with the developer of the rump, and that's actually Rump and Brady Properties over on... on Schaefer Road. You may recall, we did a development agreement with them a year and a half or so ago. When they plan to develop the property, they actually need some drainage right-of-way and easements from SCUCISD that owns the property to the south. If you sort of go behind Corbett Middle School, where Ray Corbett Drive will extend, they own attractive land down there. The school district generally doesn't want to deal with developers in terms of giving up easements and things like that. You may recall, we did a similar set of agreements over off Rips Kreusler for the extension of the property there. But the school district will deal with the city. In this case, essentially, the agreement is with the school district that they would do an appraisal on the value of those, the right-of-way easements, agree to sell those to the City of Shirts. We would then own the right-of-way and maintain it. It's got some other stipulations in it. But from the city's perspective, we wouldn't bear the cost on that. Again, we have an agreement that's on here with the Rump property, where essentially, they would bear the cost of paying the school district for the appraisal and acquiring the land. We would not move forward with the school district till we entered into the Rump agreement. So again, there's no cost to the city. This is similar to what we did over off the extension of Rips Kreusler back there with the right-of-way as well. So I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. James. All right, council, floor is open for discussion. The, no waving, no action. Is there a motion to approve resolution number 25R077?
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Have motion made by Councilmember McEluso and second by Councilmember Guerrero. Council, any other comments? All right, we'll start the vote with Councilmember McEluso.
Aye.
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 We have seven ayes, no objection. Motion passes.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. All right, we'll move on to item number 11, resolution number 25R100. Authorizing a lease agreement with Guadalupe County Children's Advocacy Center for approximately 1.1 acre tract at 1049 Live Oak Road. Mr. James?
Thank you, Mayor. Again, as the caption states, this is a lease agreement we're recommending the city enter into with GCCAC, Guadalupe County Children's Advocacy Center. As you may know, they partner with our police department and other police department law enforcement agencies in the area. They currently have an office in Seguin. They provide services to family where there have been issues of violence and abuse, things like that. So they work hand in hand with our police department. We certainly think their having a presence right in our community is a benefit. It helps our police department, it helps our residents. And as you know, we have a piece of property just up here off Live Oak Road. It's where the old house used to be in front of the water tower. We demolished the house. We don't really have a use for it. That property, we bear a cost to mow it and things like that. It seems like a win-win on this one to partner with this nonprofit agency for this public purpose. So again, as it lays out, there's, it's an initial term of 25 years with five additional potential extensions, which would give us 50 years. It's just for a nominal $10 amount, so again, there's not a significant amount of revenue we come in under. One of the stipulations is that they would have, up until January 1st of 2030, in order to pull a building permit right, it gives them about four years or so to raise the funds to go into construction. And then they would need to get a certificate of occupancy within two years after that. So again, that we haven't leased this property, we're all sitting here 20 years and nothing's happened for whatever reason. So we think this is a good partnership, where the city does our job, our nonprofits and our service organizations do theirs, and so staff is recommending approval.
Thank you, Mr. James. All right, council, floor is open for discussion.
I have a question.
Yes, Councilmember Guerrero?
This advocacy center, is it gonna service the children in Shirts only?
No, it'll, it'll serve the region. Again, they have an office in Seguin. This would, this would create an office here. So it would, it would provide services, you know, for anyone that they were to serve. So it could be if somebody can't make an appointment who lives in Seguin, they might come over here. So it's not just to serve residents of Shirts, but certainly having a location here would mean folks are not having to travel for that as far. So we think it's a good idea to have it centered in our community.
I motion to approve resolution 25R100.
Second.
Have motion made by Councilmember Guerrero and second by Councilmember Watson. Council, any other comments? All right, Councilmember Guerrero, cast your vote.
Aye.
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 We have seven ayes, no objections. Motion passes. All right, we'll move on to item number 12, resolution number 25R111. Authorizing the cancellation of the public facility license agreement with the Shirts Youth Soccer Alliance and transitioning to city operations of the Soccer, Shirts Soccer Complex. Ms. Trump?
Excuse me, I'm fighting a little cold off tonight. I'm here to talk about the Shirts Soccer Complex operations proposal. We talked at the retreat on August 1st, and not everyone was in attendance and wanted to discuss it again tonight and get some more feedback from council. Try to run through this a little bit quickly, because some of you have heard it before. Just a short history of the public facility license agreements here in the City of Shirts. You know, when we started out many years ago, we were a small town. We bonded a lot of quality of life projects, didn't have a big staff, turned to community organizations to operate those facilities. As we grow and as capacity grows, we have added staff now who have some expertise in recreation. So we're, we're adding a lot of capacity, becoming a little bit more sophisticated in our efforts, looking through our agreements. Standards keep increasing, you know, I keep hearing, you know, we want more, more attention to our parks, higher levels of maintenance, irrigated parkland, things like that. And so we're trying to work through those things. And as we go through this process, we've audited some of our current facility license agreements, and through that process, we have identified some issues. And so just a little history, again, this complex, we purchased in 2008. At that time, you know, we just had four park workers, they mowed the grass, and, you know, we weren't able to take this on. We didn't have a recreation software, we didn't have a recreation team. So again, the city did an agreement with some alliance members. They created CISA, Shirts Youth Soccer Alliance. In 2009, it included SESAT at that time, GRECA, and the Lions FC. We renovated in 2013. The fields had to be shut down for a couple of years, and it's the facility you see today. And at that time, we renewed the agreement with CISA, and SESAT exited the alliance and the YMCA joined at that time. So the current iteration is YMCA, GRECA, and the Lions FC with the city in the CISA alliance managing this complex. So again, through the, through the sort of audit of the, of the program, we, we've come to see some concerns in operations, and there's some building maintenance issues that have come up. It's 10 years old now, this renovation, so these things start to pop up. And a lot of times, some of the nonprofit organizations just don't have the capacity to make the, the maintenance adjustments that need to happen. Turf management, we do have, you know, again, some issues with our will that we've been working on, but over time, we have not kept up with herbicide application on our turf. We have a lot of weed growth. Irrigation management is a constant. It's just always with our ground shifting in South Texas, it's a constant thing, time intensive and a lot of money. Administrative, there's some concerns about financial sustainability of the alliance and the organizations that are in that alliance. There's been some compliance issues, some insurance lapses, and things like that. Also, just best management practices that nonprofits, you know, should follow. We're not always following those things. Everybody kind of knows everybody. You know, sometimes we may not be having documentation or backup for decisions or things that are made that you would have in a city or in a private business. And then organization structure, again, it's sort of just set up as these competitors that are working together are supposed to be working together, and it hasn't always just worked that well. And then there's been some concerns about inequitable access. And, you know, not everybody has been able to get in there that has wanted to get in and play in those fields. It's just a couple of pictures of maintenance, just some issues that most of these have been addressed over, over the last year or so, but just little, little things, the way that it's been operated, you know, we wouldn't operate as a city. When we have a special event, we take extra care to make sure all kinds of hazards are, are mitigated so that people don't trip over things and things like that. Painting, things like that, haven't been done over time that need to be done. And we, the picture on the left was not painting, the picture on the right is when we went and painted it all. You can see some patches in the background, that was like a broken water line. You've got to reseed those, you've got to hydro-moach those. So city went in and has taken some time to renovate the facility. When we invested 1.8 million in the lights, we went ahead and spent 50,000 on updating this facility to make sure that it was up to par with the investment that the EDC had made in the lighting. You know, missing mirrors, graffiti covering up with white paint, broken soap dispensers, just, just little things that have been addressed now. We went in, epoxied the floors, looking really nice now. So staff feels like it's the right time to adjust, that's why we're coming to you now. We've made a lot of investments to the facility. We have, we want to have enhanced facility maintenance and oversight. I think Parks Board has asked for enhanced facility maintenance overall in our park system. I've heard it from council, that's what we're trying to do. We want to have more equitable access, we want to be open to other leagues, if possible, as well as city programming, when we can fit it in. And then increase capacity and programming, like I said, want to be able to maximize. We added a lot of capacity with the lighting. Obviously, fields do need rest, but we want to be able to maximize what we can with that added capacity. So again, our recommendation is to go to city operations. We're a neutral party. We want to hire a city athletic coordinator who would help manage the field utilization in partnership with the organizations that are currently there now, including GRECA, the Lions, if the Y ever wanted to come back, and then other organizations that might want to come play there. We want to competitively bid out our field maintenance operations. We think we would be able to increase the maintenance level there. By doing that, competitively bid out concessionaire operations, we think we could get a favorable contract. Most cities, you know, ask for anywhere from 15 to 25% of concession operations. We're not doing that currently with the alliance. We want to move to like a recognized sports association format, framework. Essentially, all the current alliance members would be a part of this, and they would have priority space. So anybody else that came in would be behind them in terms of prioritization of field use. And they would coordinate with athletics coordinator for the field use. Beginning of every season, they'd come in and sit down and say, here's what we need to run our program. We would allot them the space and the time, and then we go to the next, and then we go to the next, essentially. And then again, soccer associations continue to manage their programs. They've done a great job, a lot of legacy there in coaching staffs, and the people that they have working there had a great impact on the community. They know how to coach soccer and run soccer, and we do not want to be doing that. We want to be focusing on field maintenance and the field utilization. Benefits, we think, for this transition, we can continue to invest in the facility to meet the resident standards. We think it'll be more fair and transparent access for all users. We'll have additional capacity for city-led programs. We want to streamline operations through technology. Our current lighting can be integrated with our reservation software. When you reserve the field, the lights are just turned on based on the reservation time. We want to eliminate duplication. Currently, right now, we have to have insurance, the alliance has insurance, the independent associations have insurance, there's schedules, there's websites, there's duplication. And then, again, the relationship is still remaining with these leagues that are here in the community. Here's the budget that we talked about on October, August 1st, excuse me. The numbers are there that show, basically on the left is kind of what we do now. The city pays for some things in the first column, and the CISA alliance pays for some things in that second column. And then to the right of the black line is what we're proposing. We just, it's all coming under the city. So we, you know, the way the, the complex is funded is teams that come in pay for gameplay. That's where we get the majority of the revenue, and then tournaments. And so that would still continue. People would come in, have tournaments, the revenue would come to the city, we would use the revenue we're getting to fund the positions and the maintenance. You do see an increase in maintenance there. Again, that's, we, we think we need to be paying more to be able to get the results we want. That's our goal there. You know, additional supplies, again, the staff. And then we think we'll come out with a net excess revenues of about 32,000, give or take. Again, this looks like a copy, sorry, but just to reiterate, this is, our recommendation is neutral party at city operations. Again, soccer associations continue to manage their programs, and then we are just proposing, again, a structure, fee structure where everyone pays. We are looking at a tiered structure. We want to come back in November to Parks Board and finalize that fee structure. But ultimately, it would be recreational use is lower, a lower rate, and pay-to-play, club play is a medium tier, and then tournaments outside the city, semi-professional, whatever, would be a separate tier. That way, we'd be able to fund the complex. We did take this to Parks Board, talked about it twice at meetings in June and July, two-hour meetings, lot of discussion, lot of passion, lot of community support on, on this complex. Ultimately, the feedback from the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board sort of mirrored some of the staff concerns about equity and priority use, and how would GRECA, they, they had a proposal at the Parks Board meeting, just like they did tonight, how would they prioritize field use? Concerns about the contracts that are currently in place with, you know, some family and things like that. Acknowledged, you know, obviously GRECA knows soccer, again, the Lions know soccer, all these organizations know soccer. City staff knows, you know, the maintenance, the irrigation, the turf management. We just want to separate those two. We're not, we're not trying to do soccer. And then, again, we did get some feedback on the fee structure, but we were a little bit stuck on the fee structure at the last Parks Board meeting, so we want to, we want to use them to be able to work through this, to finalize that. Ultimately, they did provide a recommendation to council, we went over this on the first, the motion to dissolve the CISA alliance in agreement. There were five ayes and one nay. The one nay was our GRECA president. And then the motion to recommend city operations of soccer complex and hire an athletic coordinator. The Parks Board added additional staff as well. They wanted to have more than one athletic coordinator. There were four ayes for that, two nays. One of the nays was Bill Bosch, our Vice Chair of the Parks Board. He only said nay because he did not think we needed more staff. He thinks we just need the one. That's why he's votes different. And then the other nay was the GRECA representative. I did a little bit more research with my benchmark cities since we last talked. I wanted to add this here for you, so you had this. You know, really, esports is becoming a business. It's becoming much more complex and complicated as a lot of new organizations are created. And it's difficult to manage those type of operations in volunteer capacity, which is sort of what we have. You know, you, you get into the capital project planning, it, it's difficult to be able to fund those things appropriately in those kind of agreements. Most of these agencies, again, have a tiered system with the rec leagues having a priority, and then they have the additional tiers for travel and select and things like that. Some of them have a per-player fee, but they're still based on tiers of play. Some have resident, non-resident. There's a lot of things to consider. Again, we want to work through Parks Board with that, and we're happy to come back to council if you want us to as well on that fee structure. Most agencies have concession contracts with a 15% minimum percentage. We're not getting that currently. And then all the following cities here maintain their own facilities, they manage field utilization through priority framework like I'm proposing, and they have individual field agreements with each association. So that's College Station, that's New Braunfels, that's Temple. San Antonio has both. They have a few where the organizations maintain it, and then they have many that they maintain. And then Flugerville as well. So just, so you know, this is, this is sort of a common arrangement. We actually are the anomaly here, the way we've set it up, because again, it was sort of the old model with these things becoming more and more complex. Little bit about the differences in associations, you know, I know we talked about BVYA a little bit on the first, they're a different organization. Just wanted to show this here, I know it's a lot of information, but the differences between them. BVYA is still very volunteer-driven. They do not outsource any of their operational functions. It is still volunteer-led maintenance as well. They, you know, mandate team field days, have to go out there, they run the concession stand themselves. The board members are out there running the field. There is, there is no paid professionals running BVYA, except for the outsourced plumbing and things like that. So, and they're real, they're used primarily by BVYA leagues. They also have a higher residency rate, there's about 46% residents in BVYA. They have a bigger reserve. After COVID, they struggled, and they came back and have a, have a reserve, and they're investing back into the, to the organization, into the fields. However, we did have the conversation with them and with Parks Board as well, it may not always be this way. This, this agreement struggled for a long time, and it still may in the future. So, you know, we're trying to, again, try to be fair and equitable in our assessment of how these things are working. And it, and that's working right now, but may not in the future. So just wanted to say that for the record. They're also a multi-sport organization. If you didn't know, they do baseball, softball, they have agreements with SCUC, they do basketball and volleyball in their gyms, and then they do run the swim team out at Pickle Park. So they have different sports. They used to do They used to do cheer and football as well, um, but they've stopped doing that. And then CISA's the alliance, they're in the middle. Again, 35,000 operating funds, no reserves. We've never been able to build a pool up to be able to really fund the investments that we need in that facility. A lot of high use by external agencies, external leagues and tournaments, external people, not residents. Um, and then there's a, again, um, the board doesn't outs, they outsource their operational functions. There's not CISA board members out on the complex sort of running it where it's just different. Um, and then, and then Gracea is its own entity, obviously. And, and there on the right, you know, it's, it's sort of the, it's similar. Um, but I wanted to make sure you knew the difference between CISA and Gracea. And so options going forward, you know, we could continue with CISA. We could really uh restructure the agreement and amend the bylaws and really invest a lot of time to get them in to compliance uh with what we need. And we could still try to push to competitively bid out sort of the field maintenance and the operations, the concession and things that we think would make it better. We could do that. We could go with staff's recommendation, which is to transition to city operations and hire that athletic coordinator. Or if, if that's not the desire for council and we have a different um idea for the way we want to move forward, we would recommend that you publish an RFP for an organization to run the facility. That is what San Antonio does. That's what other cities are doing. It's again, it's about equity and fairness. There's a lot of groups that want to get in and um that's just the way to do it. That makes it the most transparent for everybody. So that's what we would recommend if you wanted to go that way. Timeline, again, we can't just turn this off one day and start the next. It is, we're integrated together with these organizations. We want to work together with them. We have to make sure it's smooth transition and the, the, the leagues and the residents don't suffer who are playing out there. So, so we would, you know, be trying to give them notice. Um, if this passes, you know, today, we'd be giving them notice that we have to have a minimum of 60 days. We'd be giving them a lot more than that because we're trying to transition by um January and February 2026. Um, we'd have to hire, we'd have to, you know, finalize fee structure and deadlines. We'd have to start accepting tournament agreements in September, the city, so we could start taking in that revenue and then we could be phasing out all their um payments out of the alliance uh records. You know, we'd have to get into the mowing contract. We'd have to put out RFP for the concessions. There's just a lot of work to be done between here and now. Um, and then the goal would be, again, there's tournaments still hosting, so the alliance would still be helping run the tournaments. Everything would be in place currently until we get to that sort of January timeframe where we're hopefully able to just have city operations commence. So that, just wanted you to have that so you can understand our plan forward. And I will answer any questions or take any feedback.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Schumacher. All right, council, floor's open for discussion.
I have a question. Um, how many city employees do you have right now?
Can you say that again? I'm sorry.
How many city employees do you have right now?
How many city employees in Parks and Recreation?
Yes.
Community Services? We have 26.
Okay. And uh these, this pic, the pictures that you showed us, how long have they been? How long has that been going on?
I would say we've always sort of struggled over the years with different maintenance issues. Um, most of the things have been since June or July of 2024, when we really started walking through the complex and the alliance did address some of them. And we, it took us a while to get uh to where we are now, which if you were there for the um ribbon cutting, you know, everything was kind of spruced up, repainted, all that. So it took us about a year to get through all the, all the issues.
Okay. Um, I heard the uh, the presentation a while back from uh Gracea and they're saying uh they can, they can do this full control at no cost to the city. And also, like you were saying on your presentation, they have all the big tournaments. And I, I like the fact that they're going to be bringing business to our city so they can stay here in the hotels, they can eat at our restaurants and bring revenue, which we're hurting on revenue right now because the state hasn't paid us what they owe us. So I like that fact. Uh, I do want to propose a motion that uh I'm willing to give Gracea two years. One year for evaluation and the, the following year to see if it, if they do comply with what they told us or what was said in their presentation. That would be my proposal.
All right. Before we make any motions, let's make sure that we have all council members of uh have uh an option to say a couple of words. If you can turn on the mic, I, I can see that you would like to speak. Uh, council member Brown?
Yeah. Uh, you, you point a lot at uh Grace's maintenance, uh lack of maintenance, et cetera. And I know that uh BVYA, uh the fields back here are pristine, they're, you know, city standards, but have, I, I've been driving around looking at these things. Drive around the Pickle Park ballfields that Gracea or um BVYA does charge for and they're dirt fields. There's no grass out there. Uh, I mean, it's, it's, it's almost embarrassing. It's like, well, yeah, this is for the, the castoffs, you know, but they charge for it.
So they do charge a minimal fee to reserve for practice space. There's no irrigation there, so there's no possibility to water the grass.
Well, then maybe that's something if we're gonna have.
That's why we built this complex, because that was the old complex, right? And so they built that and moved their games here. So yeah, there is no irrigation there at all. Yeah.
Yeah. You know, and I realize that this is a, you know, a showcase uh place, but it's relatively small too compared to the soccer fields.
It is. This is 12 acres and the uh soccer complex is 42.
Yeah.
A lot bigger, um, yeah, a lot bigger task.
Yeah. And uh, you know, I want to keep everything in great shape. I would want to see everything in great shape. It's the only way that we can justify charging people for it. But I don't want to see us hiring more people to do that. If we can, if we can tighten up uh agreements, uh, you know, to, to add a little accountability and a little uh going forward, I'm kind of agreeing with Councilman Guerrero of giving them a chance because I think what we've done here is we let it go too long. Instead of, instead of staying on top of it, we let it go too long and now that we're at the end of the contract, well, let's just drop it, hire ourselves money and we'll just move on.
So this is not the end of this contract, just to be clear.
Well, terminate, you want to terminate, terminate the agreement.
Correct. Yes, yes. We, we have been, again, struggling over the years and, and you're right, we haven't uh pushed as much as we could have over the years. Um, again, we didn't have additional staff to have that oversight and since we've had those, it has given us more time to really look into this stuff and dig into it. So that's what's, that's what's brought it up again. We're trying to be about process improvement and continual improvement of our facilities. So that's why we're coming with you for this recommendation.
Turf, facilities, concessions, bathrooms, you know, those are the kind of things I think we can put into uh user agreements, you know, and, and whatnot. And uh, again, I'm, I'm not, if it doesn't work out, we need to take care of it, okay? And then put out the RFP. I think the RFP, again, as you said, is the most transparent way to do it. But in the meantime, we've got people that are here, they've been doing it. Um, a- and if we stay on top of them and if it doesn't, again, if it doesn't work, it doesn't work.
Right.
But I, I think we just let it go too long.
And I just want to clarify that CISA is the alliance, which is currently operating it, not Gracea. They're a member. So it would, it would either maintain how it is now or it's still a dissolving of the alliance and changing who operates it. Does that make sense?
Okay. Uh, then would it be on uh, would it be two separate agreements between Lions and Gracea?
I mean, that's.
I, I'm just asking, you know.
Yeah. That's essentially kind of what staff has been proposing, right? Is, is the staff is a neutral party and we have an independent agreement with any entity that wants to come in and use those fields. Did you want to add?
I, I guess just to expound on the clarification between CISA and Gracea. It, if the intent would be to have Gracea take over the role that CISA is currently filling, then, then we would dissolve CISA and have an agreement with Gracea. I, and I, I do want to reiterate, reiterate something I've said before. I mean, we do have the three options in there. One is to continue CISA as it is and then we would have that additional oversight that you were describing in, in terms of competitively bidding out the field maintenance, competitively building out, uh bidding out concession operations, things of that nature. That, that more closely, I think, represents what you're saying. If we were to, if we were to turn it over to an alternative organization other than Gracea, my recommendation would be that we do an open RFP because we believe that there are possibly other organizations out there that would want to fill that role. And I, I just, in terms of transparency and competitiveness, in terms of city operations and because that, these are public funds and this is, this is a public facility, I, I don't think it would be appropriate to just grant it directly to an organization. I, I don't know how they did it 14, 15 years ago with, with BVYA, but if, if we're in that situation today, I'd make that same recommendation, that it is a, a published RFP and it's a competitive process that everybody has an opportunity to participate in and that we have clearly defined standards. And I, I think there are things in there. Just to, to expound a little bit, uh, right now, the city is subsidizing the electricity usage and the water usage to 70%.
Correct.
So I, I would say that would be, and we spent about $50,000 out of our other money. We're, we're talking about having to come up with money and possibly raising the tax rate. I, if we were to completely outsource this, my recommendation would be to recover things like that $49, $50,000, recover the water and sewer costs as, as well as the electricity cost. So that's not being borne by the, by the property taxpayer. So I, I'm, I'm stated that recommendation when we were doing the, doing the um budget retreat. I just kind of want to restate that. If that's the council's direction to move forward, I would just say that we would do it under, under that framework rather than just making a direct agreement with an organization.
Okay. Before I recognize uh council member Davis, I just want to remind the council that this is a authorization to cancel the license agreement, okay? It is not to provide or turn over the operations to Gracea. It, this is whether or not the city is going to accept it. And once, once the council decides, then we can go ahead and, and put it on a future agenda, uh how we're gonna address this. Uh, but we'll need Dan's help on this one because Gracea is part of the alliance.
Correct.
Okay. All right. Council member Davis?
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm sort of on the, on the bubble with this. Um, I am a fan of city operations when it's done right and I'm a, I'm a fan of some of our other volunteer organizations when they do it right. I think there's a lot more information that we need to look at before we make a final decision. If you go back to slide 17, where you show BVYA, CISA and Gracea, I think this is a very disingenuous slide to put in here because we, we talk about what BVYA does, we're talking about Gracea does, and then we throw S, uh, CISA in the middle. And CISA is a multiplayer event. It's got, as you mentioned, the Lions, Gracea, the YMCA and the City of Shirts.
Correct.
Um, and I think it's disingenuous to throw out the, the ma, I mean, talk to me about the maintenance of the soccer complex. You've got four organizations out there. Who's responsible for maintenance?
The CISA alliance. So it's a, it's an independent 501(c)(3) organization. That is responsible for the maintenance, not, not each individual entity. They are together jointly responsible.
And what has the city done about that in the past several years?
We have been going to meetings and again, guiding them in the direction that we want them to go.
Obviously not well.
I would agree though. We have not done the best that we could.
If you're showing me a city facility that's not being maintained and we say the YMCA is involved in this and the Lions Football Club and Gracea and the city, then I, I just, I just, it just baffles me that we see those pictures there and we say this is a long, long, ongoing problem. Obviously, the whole structure for CISA is messed up. Um, and if you go back to your end slide, to be honest with you, uh, I'm number 19 with the timeline.
Yes.
I'll be honest with you. I, I've been around the, the City of Shirts for a long time and I sure as heck don't believe that the city's going to be able to adhere to this timeline and, and resolve this with a city-operated program. We're talking by the end of this year. I, I know for a fact, sit, things done by the city don't move that fast. No way, no how. I've been here long enough and, and before I sat in this chair, I spent eight years on the Parks Board? No. I, you know, I, I agree that it's a city complex and it's got to be maintained, but I think 99% of the problem is the fact that it was structured with four different groups, with everybody pointing fingers different ways and nobody really being held accountable to include the city, straight up. Um, I, I have concerns about this. And again, I, I want premier facilities in our, in our community. Uh, if we're spending tax dollar, taxpayer dollars on, on city facilities, I want it to benefit our residents first and foremost. But I, I, I'm not sure that we have thought all of this out. Um, to just say, hey, let's just stop now and here's a new plan, we'll start today. I just don't have a warm fuzzy about it. Uh, I see in the, in here in this timeline that, you know, we're talking about doing RFPs and, and, you know, I can see circumstances where we don't get any bids at all or any good bids. Uh, I, I see problems with this. I, i- if anything, uh, I, I do understand the city manager's perspective. Uh, if we're not, first of all, I mean, if we kept CISA, it's a matter of the city coming up with some clear guidance for the members of CISA on who's doing what uh and how things are paid for. You've got four members out there. You think that the, or the, the irrigation would either be split four ways or would be based on the percentage that each one of those organizations use those fields.
That group, yeah.
You would think that would be the same standard for maintaining buildings or something like that, but apparently we don't have any clear, clear standards or guidance. Um, I, I would either myself at this point, and again, I'm open to discussion going forward. I'm, I would either say keep CISA and get some clear guidance to the members of CISA so that we don't have sprinklers running when they shouldn't run, uh, we don't have lights left on when there's no one playing on the soccer fields. Those are simple things and we can't even get those done. Uh, and if, and if the decision is, let's not do CISA because it's not practical or it's not functional because we've got four different people with four different viewpoints and apparently they can't get on the same page, then, then I, I would have to agree with the city manager that the right thing to do would say, let's do an RFP to see if somebody can manage it um going forward and, and have clear standards and hold them accountable to it. Um, and if it works, great. If it doesn't, then I think the city needs to come up with a plan that's on a reasonable timeline that they can actually pull off to make it a city managed function. But I don't think we're there right now.
Council member McElusso.
I can see some of uh Councilman Davis's points there. I don't, I do think the timeline might be a little aggressive. Uh, obviously you guys created it, so you feel, I would think, confident in being able to adhere to that. Um, I, I would be more supportive of, of canceling the contract. Uh, I do think the city can provide better maintenance. I don't uh, I don't, I, I can't see how we had that complex, had issues, have uh obviously maintenance issues, uh issues with, with equitable access. We're not having uh, you know, I, I don't think that residents have a priority on, on using the complex. Um, I think there's a, a room for a lot of improvements and um personally, for me, I think city doing the maintenance and then using the organizations to run the leagues is the right way to go and that's what I, I would be supportive of.
Council member Guerrero.
When, when something doesn't work and it continues to, to operate, you got to try something different. And that's what I see here. And with all due respect to the city, I would prefer to save the city thousands of dollars on the RFP and give Gracea two years to get this thing together and hold them to the fire. That would be my proposal.
Okay. Council member Westbrook.
Yeah, so sort of what I see is timeline's aggressive, um, but what I also want to see is we can build capacity. So I'm sort of in favor of hiring the um, your manager for the next year, two years and then working in, working in conjunction with whoever's managing the whole property, and then working in, working in conjunction with whoever's managing the whole property, building capacity. Obviously, the city, I think the City of Shirts will probably manage the operations better than the field, but obviously the organizations, CISA, Graysa, whatever, know soccer better. And so I'd like for them to sort of create some capacity, learn from one another. And then in a year, I'm comfortable with a year. It doesn't take two years to identify if an organization can or cannot run a soccer, you know, a soccer, uh, field. It doesn't take two years, but I'm comfortable with a year or two years, but I'm interested in seeing if we can hire, you know, the soccer manager and continue with, you know, with the current status.
So can I just, one minute, I know some other people might want to add. I just want to clarify a couple of things because I'm hearing different things. Um, so it's athletic coordinator that we're proposing to hire and, um, I agree it may be an aggressive timeline. We have been, um, trying to get this done, um, in a reasonable time and fit it in between seasons, right? Spring season, uh, will be coming quickly in, in late February, March. Again, this arrangement is not running soccer. We're not, people would still be signing up with the soccer leagues, right? This arrangement would be the city maintaining the fields, which we have a current mowing contract already in the city and we could do an addendum to that current contract and add this facility on. So we could publish an RFP for concessions to operate out of that concession stand. It could be Graysa that gets that concessionaire contract. It could be a different restaurant. If we don't get a concessionaire, uh, through that process, Plan B would be to go to food trucks, which we do at every other event that we have in the city and we have a slew of, you know, 30 or 40 to choose from that we could bring in to support this operation in the interim. Yes, hiring the right person would take the longest time for us to get there, but again, I have staff that have sat in these CISA meetings for over a year now, intensively, to your point, trying to get things done and we have not been able to get it done, um, bec- because we want to try to move this forward. And the only way we've been able to really get things moving, which is equitable pricing, uh, fee structures and things like that. Currently in the past, different groups were paying different field rates. It was all across the board. So we, we have moved the needle a little bit with some of these things. Um, but the only way we're able to get things done is if city staff actually does the work. That has been our experience. So to your point, yes, it hasn't been working well and we haven't had the oversight that, that we should have because again, we haven't had a dedicated recreation team. Council hired, you know, authorized us to hire those, those recreation manager and the rec coordinator two years ago, whatever it was now, almost three years. And they've made significant inroads into, into dealing with these issues. So that's why we're here now where we weren't earlier. But these have been a struggle forever and we've been trying to work on it and we have, again, moved the needle slightly, not where we want to be. But this is complicated. It, it is, it's complex and it is difficult in these community partnerships, right? It is so easier, so much easier to go to a corporation and say, you're not doing well enough, we want to cancel this contract. It is very difficult to sit in a room with people that live here and that, that their kids play here and have to say, we're not up to par where we want to be. That's a difficult conversation. So, I mean, I still have to work with these folks later and we want to still work with Graysa. They will still be integral to this operation. So I want to, i- i- it feels like they're being pushed out or that's how it's being presented, that's not the case.
Before I recognize our city manager for a comment, you brought up an interesting point is that, um, we haven't been managing the fields. And you indicated just right now that you've been working with them, but it was never brought up to council's attention. All of a sudden, we're made aware of all the issues that you're having and you have a, you have a cancellation of this, this, uh, agreement without having brought it up to the council. How long has it been? It, it almost seems like you've been working on this for years and we haven't been notified of it. Why?
I think really sort of the turn was when the YMCA sort of vacated the alliance. It's been shifting ever since that time, right? So right around that time when Freddie DeGuglato retired and just things at the Y have been changed, i- it has just sort of slowly been changing over time.
But it should have been brought up to council. Freddie retired over two years ago. And, and that, that troubles me.
Mr. Mayor. I've got a question. You said the YMCA has abandoned the alliance?
They're still, they're still attending, but there's just not the same engagement as there was in the past.
My, my question would be, and we're hearing feedback from Graysa on this proposal. Why, why are we not hearing any feedback or any comments from the YMCA or the Lions Football Club?
They were at Park.
Are they, are they interested in this at all?
Yes, they were at Parks Board and they, they, uh, spoke at Parks Board and, um, trying to remember if the Lions came here. I don't think they did, but they, they agree that it's not working in its current form.
Well.
But I, I don't know that they're, they're not in favor of, they're in favor, excuse me, of, of city operations.
If I may interrupt you, uh, both of them, the YMCA and the Lions Club were there. The YMCA is now doing all their, their soccer leagues over in the City of Siblo. That's why they, they actually did not want to get involved in this one. I don't recall what the Lions Club said, but that brings the point is that there's one of the alliances, I think when, it's, it's like council. We have seven different visions, seven different opinions, and I think that was the issue with the alliance. You had four different bodies battling, battling the, what are we going to do here? And we were one of them. Our city was one of them and we didn't do a thing. We didn't check on the fields, we didn't check on anything because, and then we weren't even made aware of the issues for two years. Uh, and this is an aggressive, uh, timeline, but, um, I'll go ahead and recognize our, our city manager. He had a comment.
I just have a clarifying question to Councilman Westbrook's proposal, just to clarify. Were you saying you would prefer that the city take it over for two years and then come forward with say, an RFP for somebody to take it over? Is that, making sure I heard you correctly?
Well, an RFP does need to come. I'm seeing the one year, but I'm seeing in the short term, an athletic coordinator needs to be hired because what I'm hearing is Graysa, CISA, Lions, YMCA. Listen, I can recognize, um, poor communication, you know what I'm saying, when I see it. So there needs to be an athletic coordinator, comes in and his or her job is to put everybody on the same page, uh, generate process procedures and expectations and standards. That's what I'm hoping to sort of see. And so everybody benefits, there's some standards set, expectations set for the organization and then the City of Shirts sort of gets the benefit of learning, uh, from Graysa, YMCA, Lions. I'm sort of seeing that one. I don't, my take is it doesn't take two years. I don't think people realize how long two years is. That's, that's a long time to, to, to assess whether organization can or cannot run, you know, an organiza, uh, facility like this. Does that clarify or does that muddy the waters even more?
I might be more confused now. So you're.
Athletic coordinator, athletic, athletic coordinator and an RFP. Let, let Graysa run it this year and then in a year, go for an RFP. I think maybe that simplifies it.
Once again, I have to remind the council that the, the actual resolution is the cancellation of the agreement. We cannot, we cannot be going off the deep, we can't be having that discussion, who's going to take over until we decide what we're going to do here, whether or not we're going to cancel the contract. If we are, then we go in a different direction. If we don't make a motion or it fails, then it goes a different path also. So, uh, again, we have to stick to what the agenda is in this situation, the cancellation of the agreement.
Mayor, I motion that we approve Resolution 25R 111.
There's been a motion made. If it's second, we will cut all discussion off. Do you still want to have a discussion on it?
Yes.
Councilmember Guerrero.
I say, we've gotten, this has gone too far, whether it's a year, two years. We need a change now and my proposal stands. Hold Graysa to the fire for two years, one year for evaluation and the following year to see if they, if they live up to what they're saying. That's my proposal.
Second yet?
No, we don't have a second though. So Councilmember, uh, McEluso.
Can, can I make one more comment before I second the motion?
Yes, please do.
Uh, change is needed and I think just continuing with what we had isn't the right answer. And, um, as our city grows, we need that athletic coordinator. We need someone that can manage the fields that we have that were paid for by the citizens. So we need to, uh, that, that's the, that's the line that I see that we need to go down. And, um, the, they have a proposal on a budget. There's not going to be, there, it's actually room for profit for the city to be able to recover some of the costs that we have, uh, including the salary of the employee. I, I'm, I'm full supporter of, of moving it to city operations, so I'll second that motion.
Second the motion before we have the vote. Councilmember Hayward, do you?
I just wanted to say, we have four people. As you say, some people say you get 10 people in a room and you get 10 different answers. So you've got four people, it's not working and I know that all this is about canceling the contract. We need to cancel the, we need to get rid of this alliance and start over because this is not working.
Motion's been made to approve the Resolution 25R 111 to cancel the license agreement that we have with CISA, okay? Uh, motion's been made by Councilmember Watson. We'll start the vote.
May, clarification, if we vote yes, we, we're going to cancel the agreement and then the original.
The, the city will come back with a proposal on how they're going to take over the operations.
So, yeah, to be clear, the resolution is to cancel the CISA alliance and to transition to city operations by hiring an athletic coordinator. Again, we can come back with another workshop if we would like to talk about fee structures or who is the registered sports organization or however we want to frame this in the future.
But the item is on the budget for discussion also.
Correct.
So if we vote no?
It stays as is.
It stays as is?
We still have an alliance. We still do business as usual. We push to try to make things better.
Are we going to still have the ability to get an athletic coordinator?
I, I think if you, if you keep it the way it is or if you affirmatively approve this resolution, it, it kind of has no impact on the budget because we've already got money in the budget to pay for the way it is now. We're just moving that money around to change it to the way we recommended for it to be. It, in that case, whether you approve or deny, we could keep the budget the same. If you, if you decline and you hire an athletic coordinator, you're going to increase the cost of the budget by the amount of that athletic coordinator.
We create a new position with the budget.
You would, you would create a new position, but then you would still have to spend that money on what you're spending. We would not be doing the reallocation of those funds. So we'd be adding the cost of an athletic coordinator to the budget. Does that make sense?
If we fill the position.
Correct. If we keep operations as they are today and then do an RFP to outsource it to some organization directly other than CISA in the future and you add an athletic coordinator, then without some sort of revenue cost recovery coming to the city, we would increase, we would net increase the cost to the city.
Correct, but the current proposal, the revenues from field rentals are offsetting this athletic coordinator position.
So the proposal they, they put on there would pay for that new position plus provide additional revenue to the city.
Correct.
The proposal from Graysa?
The proposal from.
Correct.
From the staff.
Correct.
Okay, but if, if, if we approve this, that doesn't mean that we are automatically going to go to one of the staff recommendations. Or this just says that we're going to.
It says city operation.
Yeah, and it does, it does read to transition to city operations, so.
City operations can also be an RFP process.
Correct.
So we need to amend the motion? Once we take over the motion?
You can amend the, the motion if you like, yes. Is, if there's an amendment to the motion, we can entertain that. Is there?
Yes, absolutely. I, I, I would prefer to save the city money on this RFP. I would prefer to save the city money and hold Graysa to the fire.
So what is your motion?
Amended, amend this, this, uh.
We have the, we have the motion on the floor.
Oh, then amend, I'm sorry, amend the motion.
I'm asking if we have to amend the motion, but we have to take the motion that's on the floor first and then the motion. Then you can make an amendment to the motion.
Okay.
Uh, not necessarily. I think if you.
Can you withdraw your motion?
Yeah, if you amend the motion, we vote on that amendment first and then we mo, vote on the motion.
Mayor, can I withdraw my motion?
Yes, you may.
Okay.
Mayor.
Yes, yes, Councilmember Davis.
Thanks to Councilwoman, uh, Watson for withdrawing her motion for a second. I just want to make a comment. At the end of the day, my whole perspective on this is we have a, we had a lack of direction and guidance from a group of four people. And I think before we do anything, it would be more appropriate for the city staff to come up with specific standards and guidance for the soccer complex and address that with our current structure, which is CISA, okay? And give those other agencies an opportunity to say, we can either meet those standards or not. There was, there was commentary earlier about doing an RFP that we just can't transition and award it to Graysa. Well, I would say that if you have CISA and the city had standards and if the YMCA came back and said, we're not doing that, then they are removing themselves from CISA. And if the Lions Football Club said, I'm not doing that either, then they are removing themselves from CISA and CISA becomes the city and Graysa.
And Graysa.
But at the end of the day, I think the biggest problem is we have historically had a lack of standards and a lack of guidance and a lack of accountability for the soccer complex. So to just arbitrarily say, let's just throw the bathwater out and create a whole new thing, again, I'm not getting a warm fuzzy that we have a good plan to operate the soccer complex and maintain it from a city perspective. It'd be wrong, but I, it's like you pointed out, there's a lot of information that the council is just aware of now, uh, and to hear that this has been going on for a long, long time, to just turn around and say, flip a switch and it's all fixed, I just don't buy into that, so.
I, I would recommend that we table this one, have our city staff and the alliance get together to address exactly what Councilmember Davis said before we take the action on this, uh, particular item. Uh, it, it really doesn't affect the budget either way. Like you said, all we're creating is a new position, but the funds are already there either way. So.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
The comments like, like the last couple, I feel like makes it seem as if the staff hasn't already tried to address these issues with the alliance and as if it was just, uh, you know, swept under the rug. Would that be a false interpretation of that? I mean, I'm sure you guys have been going to them requesting certain standards be met and it hasn't happened.
Correct. I mean, I think we have tried our best to, again, try to guide them in their, in their correct direction, but it is, again, there hasn't just been the consensus to be able to invest. They've all, all sort of still invested in their own organizations, not in this joint thing and, but yes, we have spent many hours trying to get this where we want it to be.
And why, and why was the YMCA kind of disenfranchised with the alliance?
Siblo, uh, they had a partnership with Siblo and created some new fields there. So they were able to move most of their program there. They maintain their position in the alliance. That way if their program grows, they have extra field capacity. Again, field capacity is at a premium in the area. Everybody wants to get in, as you know, um, and so we would be, again, people would still want to come. They'd still want to get in. Um, we, we want to support our organizations, but there's, that's just why they, they, and they also went to a structure, excuse me, where the local sports, uh, employee was not at this, uh, they're not directed at this executive branch. They're directed now regionally in San Antonio, so this executive director doesn't have direct oversight over the sports program. They, they brought it up to the corporate level per se. So it just, again, there's just been a little bit less engagement there because they don't currently need the fields at this moment.
Yeah, I would say that, you know, this is probably something that should have been brought to us earlier. However, I, I do think, I mean, I have to believe that we, we pay the staff to try to handle this so they don't have to bring it to us. And then unfortunately, it got to the point where they couldn't continue with that avenue. And so I still support, um, transitioning it to the city and, um, I'll make a motion to approve the resolution.
Okay. Do I have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Councilmember Hayward, second that motion? All right. We'll go ahead and start the, um, the vote. Councilmember McEluso.
Aye.
Aye.
Nay.
Aye.
Nay.
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 Right. Motion's been made. We have three ayes, four objections. Motion does not pass. Uh, I would recommend our city get with the, uh, alliance, try to work, uh, the differences, come out with, uh, a proposal and bring it up to council, uh... Uh, I would recommend our city get with the alliance, try to work the differences, come out with a proposal, and bring it up to council, uh, so that we can go ahead and see the progress on that.
Mayor, can I make one closing comment, and not to belabor the issue, but I do believe we made progress through this process, and I think that staff will work very hard within the structure that we have, and try and meet all of the objectives of the council, and, and we're committed to bringing it back in a better form, and, and give you more information so you make the right decision.
May. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Schum.
Matt, request something when you bring it back. Like, if it go, stays the way it is, or look at other entities. I know we're looking at cities here, um, within the area, but I actually found some that I reached out to that were in Kansas, and apparently that's kinda how they're doing things in Kansas, where the city takes over, and they have competition leagues that rent, and then they have recreation teams. So I reached out to them to see how things were. So can you bring us something other than here so that we can see what else is out there?
Absolutely, yeah. I can get national examples.
Yes.
Before we move on to the subject, does any one of the council members want to be, uh, when they have the discussions, be informed?
Yeah, I just wanna say that this was just to cancel it. But it, but it didn't, it didn't, it didn't pass.
Right, right, we still have it. But they're gonna, they're gonna have, uh, our Parks Rec team is going to reach out to the alliance and work out the, the, um, proposals as, uh, the, the issues that we, that were raised here, so that we can go ahead and get that taken care of and straightened.
Mayor?
Yes?
Mayor, I, I hope to expect, much like Mark said, there has to be some expectations and processes moving forward. I, I'm supportive of Gracia. I think people understand that now, but, um, not two years' worth of tolerance.
Yeah. All right. Thank you, Ms. Schum. All right, we'll move on. Item number 13, ordinance number 25M034, amend the city assurance code of ordinances and certain other ordinances by amending the established fees and certain licenses, permits, and other services. Mr. Walters, floor is yours.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is James Walters. I'm the Finance Director here for the City of Shirts. Annually, we like to try to come before council to adjust the schedule of fees. Starting with the budget process, we have each of these departments review their fees, looking at, see if there's any of them that need to be changed or updated based on increasing costs or competitive rates around the, in surrounding areas. What we came back with was the library. I was proposing to increase the, uh, return postage fee for interlibrary loan programs to $5. It's costing about $5.20 for postage, so right now the fee is not making up for the current cost it is for us to send the item back. Uh, the magazine proposes to add late payment fees, add cancellation fees, contract termination fee, and design change overage fee. That's a per hour charge. Currently, there was, uh, no real kind of penalty for, I mean, they kinda paid late, which most of the time they pay in advance, or if they say, oh, no, I, I don't wanna do this anymore, I wanna back out. Well, that leaves some ad space open for us, uh, that we can, uh, have to work around or try to find another ad. Uh, they're really meant to be a deterrent for like, hey, yeah, you, you put in an ad, keep up with it, and, and continue on with, with us at the magazine. Uh, the event facilities, which is the Civic Center, had some of the largest changes in the general fund fees that are proposed. Rolling in the overall kitchen fee, which is the normal rental rates for the large areas, that's, while they say delete here, it's really just rolling them into the, the other fees, uh, the overall fee, so not nickel and diming or, or charging extra. The ice bin, uh, increasing the ice bin, both the one bin and the unlimited, and then the beverage service also increased with the rate from the, the unlimited ice service that accompanies with it. Uh, they're gonna remove the cancellation fee, and I'll get to that in a moment. Uh, the portable bar on the cocktail table, they're gonna reduce the, the portable bar, which contain cocktail tables, and, um, kind of remove the cocktail tables from the fee. So instead of coming with it, they're gonna say, oh, you're gonna get that, and then if you need them, we'll add them, so the overall rate stays the same if you'll get those five tables. And then the lighting package, the lighting package is very popular. We're gonna increase those to help with our recoup costs and, and replacing those, those lights. Then average for the beverage tub, wireless microphone, lapel microphone podium, all normal things that are requested of us. They're outside our, um, our, let's see, the, the technology package, I'm sorry. They're provided, so if you have your own items and just need these specific items, we have a way to accomplish that. Uh, some of the changes include, um, removing or reducing the, some of the discounts offered. So the frequent renters, multiple days, um, day before setup, we're just kinda, we're kinda removing that one. Nonprofits go from 15 to, to 25 to 15. Shirts residents go as, um, stay at the 20. We're just kinda moving around and stating that more clearly on the, on the fee schedule. Same with the military. Military, um, still proposed, proposed at the 15. And then the churches, 503, 25% discounts. Those are the nonprofits up here. So again, we're kinda removing the duplication of the items and moving those to 15. Uh, the security fee and the coordination fee, and the officer, um, security fee, those rates will go up to match what the officers are currently making and asking for, to provide, uh, security for events. And the holiday per officer is the same with the, the holiday charges. And similarly, we're removing the, the dance floor, it's part of the normal package, and then the audiovisual services, um, we're upgrading those to 150, removing the per hour fee, and upgrading the cleaning fee to 300. There's another reason for that, but also cleaning is, is, is expensive. There are a couple of changes to the actual rental process themselves. Most of the rates are going, um, sorry, the rates are going up for the Civic Center to match local rates for like facilities, um, and help, so to continue offsetting the cost of providing service for the Civic Center. Um, the largest change is the Friday half day rate and the Friday full day rate. So Friday is actually treated more like the weekend. We have actually a lot of folks that wanted to go on Friday, and normally Fridays are weekend style rates before they are during the week. So we have a large utilization of that day, and most other like areas charge for the, more of a weekend rate for those days. The other thing we're doing is we're going to, um, instead of the early open fee that was removed before, they have additional hours, so if you wanna do something outside of that hour, um, you can, or outside the normal time slot, you can just pay $150 per hour outside your normal time slot, if you need additional setup time. Uh, it's very, it's a lot cleaner, it knows exactly how much you're getting charged, and, and if you don't need a full two hours, and you just need an hour, then it's a benefit for you. The other thing we're doing is removing the damage cancellation deposit, and just having a reservation fee. Uh, the reservation fee is nonrefundable, um, so we're not doing the deposit, but it will be, uh, applied to the rental itself. So overall bill, so it's not actually increasing the overall cost to it, uh, but you are, uh, on the hook for a little bit more upfront in case you decide to, um, cancel later. Along with the lower than deposit to hold the, the event, um, we no longer have that deposit we're holding in our bank, waiting till after the event, and seeing if there's damages or additional cleanup costs that need to be had, which is why up here we had a, um, increased cleaning fee. So the, where did I go? I just saw it. Now, I mentioned it a second ago. Oh, the, yeah, the cleaning fee goes up, so if that's needed, it will be an additional charge that will work out with the, with the tenant. Um, all of the other items follow the same, um, reasoning between all the different rates, going from the banquet packages, for the Blue Bonna Hall, um, the Civic Center and Community Center North, the rates are changing, um, as well. Was this, sorry, the, sorry, I apologize. I just read the, the, uh, Community Centers, the, the North Cliff and the Community Center here, those rates are staying the same. They'll still do the deposit type deal. Uh, the next one is the, um, the water fees, uh, water and sewer fees. The water is supposed to go up 2% on all the different sizes, the base rate, and also per thousand gallons. For residential, small commercial, same for the commercial side. I'll touch on the water impact fees and sewer impact fees. Those are shown as updates to the fee schedule. These have already been adopted by council. Uh, there's just clerical updates to the schedule itself. All right, and then. Yeah, and the sewer fees were the other one, and then where's the? Uh, the EMS rates, the basic, this, the life support rates are, um, proposed to go up $100. Uh, these are actual, if you get picked up and transported, these are the actual, um, life support services provided by the ambulance. So they have the basic life support, uh, not emergency, less life, more emergency, and then the advanced life supports. Uh, so this is actually for the, the treatment inside the ambulance if, if needed, when you're being transported. Uh, you also notice removing the per capita. Those are, um, ironed out in the most recent agreements, uh, put before the various councils, uh, and agencies that we provide service, EMS services to. And then. Last but not least. Uh, we have the sewer update, which is a 3% increase. Um, both the water and sewer rates follow the five-year rate plan that we had, um, adopted a couple of years back. Overall, about $2.40 on the average utility home. No changes to the garbage. We had done those earlier. And we also talked during the budget process of updating the drainage fee. The drainage fee is not listed in this agenda item. There are additional, um, notice requirements that we have to publish in the paper before we can hold a public hearing and change any of the drainage fees. Uh, so that process is in motion, and we plan to come back once the required timeframe for those notices have been properly adhered to. Uh, so we're still gonna come back and do that. We're still proposing that, proposing it in the budget. Uh, it's just not on this item. We'll, we'll come back with a, a note later. With the drainage rates, we do have Dan Jackson here with us, who, um, helps us with our water and sewer five-year rate plan, and we do want to go over, since we've been talking about it and has budget implications going forward, what all was in the, um, drainage fee proposal and how it came about, as well as, um, some more insight of, uh, what happens local in the area and around the state. So, just pressed down to change the.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. Uh, I am Dan Jackson with Willdan Financial Services. As James indicated, we've had the privilege of doing your water and wastewater rates for the last decade, and the city staff asked us to take a closer look at your drainage fee and to provide for you a, uh, recommendation and a framework for considering a new drainage fee. Given the lateness of the hour, I'm gonna go over this very quickly, because we're not asking you to make any decisions tonight. This is just an informational, uh, presentation. But there are three decision points we would like you to consider as you, as you take a look at these numbers. The first is the appropriateness of the fee that we're going to recommend that you adopt for the upcoming fiscal year. The second is going to be the question of how aggressive you want to be with regards to doing capital improvements to your drainage system. You know, stormwater drainage is becoming a very important issue here in the city, and the more, uh, there's a lot of need for capital improvements. Well, you know, rate making is not complicated. The more money you put into the system, the more, the higher the fee has to be. So you have to balance the, um, the, how aggressive you wanna be with doing these capital improvements with how high you're willing to set the fee. And the third, um, is, do you want to consider an alternative methodology for future years for the drainage fee? And I'll go over that a little bit more in, in just a second. So, again, I want, the, the reason why drainage fees are becoming very important is, is the fact that you are urbanizing more. Um, as cities like Shirts urbanize, it has a very significant impact on how water flows through your community. As a result, the EPA has put in a lot more regulations that are requiring cities to implement and coordinate comprehensive stormwater main management programs. You see, in the past, you, your water and sewer utility used to just sort of absorb the costs of stormwater, because stormwater costs weren't that high. Well, as you urbanize, as stormwater becomes more of an issue, and as the fees get higher and as the costs get higher, more and more cities have developed separate stormwater utilities and separate fees to cover those particular costs, and that's what the city of, uh, Shirts has done. And unfortunately, these costs are gonna continue to rise in future years as you continue to urbanize. This chart shows that, uh, it just shows a number of stormwater separate utilities there are, uh, throughout the United States. Most important thing here is that Texas is the third largest state when it comes to having separate stormwater utilities. That shows that stormwater and drainage management is a very significant issue here in the state of Texas. Okay, now, let's talk a little bit about the city assurance of stormwater background. Right now, you charge a flat fee of $5.20 a month per LUE for stormwater service. So almost all your residential households are one LUE, so you charge $5.20. Unfortunately, that fee at present right now is not sufficient to cover all of your stormwater-related operating costs, so we are gonna recommend that you adjust that fee. In addition, the city staff has identified as much as $42 million of capital improvements that are gonna be needed in the stormwater utility in the coming years. Obviously, you want your fund to be self-sufficient, so as a result of all of these factors, we're gonna recommend that you implement a new plan this year, and that you consider future adjustments in the next four years. I told you it was $5.20 was the standard fee. This chart right here compares your fee to many of your neighbors in Taylor, Selma, Sibolo, Waco, Temple, and other cities in central Texas. The average in the state of Texas is $5.15 a month. So right now, your fee is right at the average. As you can see, your fee is about where you'd expect it to be. It's a little higher than some, a little lower than others. But keep this in mind, many utilities right now charge stormwater fees that don't cover their costs. So just because any other utility's fee is lower than yours, that doesn't necessarily mean that they have a more efficient stormwater operation. It might mean that they're using their general fund to subsidize their stormwater operation. Okay, this chart right here is interesting to guys like me, at least. It shows that you have a few customers that have very, very large amounts of what was called impervious surface area. That is the key to stormwater. It's basically pavement. If you get a Walmart, or an Amazon, or a large entity like that, they're creating an awful lot of stormwater. And so, as you can see from this chart here, entities that have more than 100,000 square feet of impervious surface area are the vast majority of the impervious surface area in the city. That's why it may be beneficial in the future to think about adjusting your fee and start charging a fee by impervious surface area. That will relate more the fee to the cost and to the, to the customer that is actually incurring all that cost. Okay, you've got about 15,628 stormwater accounts right now. City of Shirts is growing. We're anticipating you're gonna hit about 18,400 accounts in, by the year 2035. More accounts means more costs, and means more stormwater, and it, it's, that is also, um, leading to the need to increase your fees in the future. What is it costing you this year to run your stormwater operation? Basically about $2.7 million. You got about $100,000 in personnel costs, and about, I'm sorry, about a million dollars in personnel costs, and you've got about $1.2 million in operating costs, and about $500,000 in capital outlays. Based on my experience doing stormwater throughout Texas, this is pretty reasonable. This is about what you would expect for a city the size of Shirts. But the key is the future. The city has identified about $42 million of future capital improvement needs to manage your drainage utility here in the city. The extent to which you fund these, uh, additional capital costs is going to drive what your ultimate stormwater fee is going to be. Again, common problem utilities have is, they need to, they need to balance the need to do these capital improvements with the willingness to implement the fees necessary to fund them. You know, sometimes you just have to prioritize the projects. Maybe you don't do all of them. Maybe you only do a portion of them. That's the, that's the thing that we would like for you to think about. As you can see, this is, this is gonna show, this shows what your costs are today, and what your costs are projected to be in the future. Right now, it's costing you about $2.7 million to run your operation. Right now, it's costing you about $2.7 million to run your operation. If you fund all $42 million in capital improvement needs, your costs will hit about $6.7 million by the year 2035. Little green portion is your debt on the capital improvement needs, as you can see, that debt would drive the need for future stormwater increases. So, this is what we're gonna recommend. We recommend that you implement, or that you consider implementing a new fee effective October 2025, based on your current methodology, the fee per LUE. We also recommend that you come back next year and review the plan again, determining, after you've had a chance to think about, how much capital improvements you want to implement and whether or not you want to consider changing the fee structure to an impervious surface area-based fee. So, our recommendation is that you increase the monthly fee from $5.20 per LUE to $8 per LUE. That will result in your fee recovering basically all of your operating costs now. It will break your fee whole, it will make your drainage fee whole. If you implement all of the $42 million in, in, in capital improvements, your fee will reach as high as $15 by 2029. So, if you want to scale back some of those capital improvements, your fee would not have to be as high as that. So, last thing I want to talk about just briefly again is this impervious surface area idea. Right now, you charge your non-residential accounts based on the number of LUEs that are assigned to that account, living unit equivalents. That does not always equate to the amount of stormwater that they produce. Impervious surface area does. You have every account, you know exactly how much square footage you have by impervious surface area. And so if you, if you convert to an impervious surface area approach in the future, two things are going to happen. One, your residential fee won't be as high, and two, your commercial fee will be higher because commercial businesses are generating more of the stormwater. So the benefit, again, the benefit of converting to an impervious surface area approach is that it ties the fee more directly to the stormwater generation and it lessens the increases on the residential. But, on the, but the challenge is that it's going to mean that commercial customers pay more because again, they are generating more of the stormwater. So, if you did an impervious surface area approach, your stormwater fee, instead of hitting $15 by 2029 for residential customers, would only hit $12. And your, and for your commercial customers, they would pay based on the range of impervious surface area. If they have 100 to 500,000 square feet, if they have 500,000 to a million, or if they have a million square feet or more, they would pay fees according to that particular structure. It is a high fee, but the fee is directly related to the amount of stormwater that is generated. So once again, the idea of today's presentation is not to ask you to make a decision, it's an informational presentation only. But, we are going to come back after you've had a chance to review this to A, ask for your approval for the fee going into effect for fiscal year 2026, and for direction related to the extent to which you want to fund the capital improvement plan and whether or not you want to consider the alternative impervious surface area methodology. Be happy to answer any questions at this time.
Oh, thank you. Before I open it up to council, I have a couple of questions for you. The stormwater management programs and projects, how do you work around where you have, we have a sister city that we share borders with and everything drains down the Cibolo Creek? How would you address something like that when you have two neighboring cities that will benefit from it? Obviously, you know, we don't want to pay for it all, is what I'm saying, how would, how do you manage something like that?
Sure, so it's kinda based on the area, right? So the Cibolo's a little different, usually the center line, kind of the boundary between us and other cities. Deets Creek, for example, we kinda, the city just naturally went along boundary lines, so we, we control whole portions of East Deets, down from Deets Road, that's all ours, right?
We're talking about the creek, yes, Cibolo Creek.
Right, and so those projects can intermix, a lot of that's left natural and so, but, so we have partnered with other cities doing, doing different things. So, a long time ago, maybe a few folks remember, we beat what we call the FEMA channel, right? That is West Deets out here, the big channel you see that goes through Shirts Parkway. And so we paid for most of that because it was in our jurisdiction, but when we built bridges and stuff over it, we partnered with our neighboring communities. But we, we did a pretty good job of laying out city limit boundaries to where, we certainly work with the neighboring cities and are in contact with them all the time, but the project boundaries are kind of easier if you lay it out that way, right? So, that, hopefully that answers your question.
Mayor, if I could clarify a little bit.
Yes, please clarify.
Well,
because it all drains down to the Cibolo Creek, down south, and we both.
So this, this first increase specifically going from $5.20 to $8 really only addresses operating concerns. Maintenance of our current, you know, right across the street over there, our neighbor, you know, our collector-type stuff, this really only gets us to the, to balancing our maintenance issues, adding enough staff to address the issues that you guys hear about all the time from your constituents. The future increases are what will take us into actually doing the larger stuff. And, and one of the things that we're bringing on would be a floodplain management coordinator, which, that's a person who could help us grandplan a little better, as well as help us seek grants. I'm not saying that we could get it all paid with grants, but there is money out there that we could try and, you know, help offset our cost. But yes, I mean, if there's a, if there's a project that's more regional in nature, we would try and participate with those other, other cities. Yes?
And if I may, so one of the things we did, hopefully fund this go around, is the master drainage plan, right? So we got a lot of areas that are, we've developed here in Central Boardwalk, we haven't developed in other areas, right? And so if we get those projects planned now, it wouldn't get good cost for them and kind of preliminary, we can get them in the regional floodplanning group studies, which we've had a lot of interest in lately, right? So those regional floodplanning groups put the projects into the state drainage plan, right? And if they're in there, then eligible for funding for these projects. And so we're not, we're not quite there to getting these projects together in order to even submit them for the plan.
Yeah, I, I understand that portion of it, but he stimulated our minds to start thinking long-range on how we're gonna address some of these things. I'm looking at 20, 20 years down the, down in the future, that we're gonna have different issues. We're, we're taking care of what's up here, but water flows down the river.
You're, you're very right, Mayor, right? We've talked about this before, some of the things is, what happens up in Bernie affects us. What we do affects the people downstream, what's right on the other side in terms of UC does or Selma does, that affects us, same thing with Cibolo. And, and so we agree with you on that. The other is, some of these projects though, it's really our, in, in our city limits and it's kind of the stuff that we have coming that's our improvement. And so I think from what staff would say, we've got enough of those to work on, we've got enough of the maintenance of stuff, right? Like we talked about over, over here, that, that we need to be doing, that as we do that drainage plan, as we have that floodplain administrator, and again, kudos to Councilman Davis for staying on us to be part of those regional organizations so that we can insert ourselves in that more. And part of what we need to make happen, right, is everybody needs to do their part. We, we've had that before, right? We've had that, we've had that with, with senior center, we've had that with other stuff. We agree with you on this, and so this is not something that the city of Shirts residents and business need to fund for the whole region. And, and I think Larry will tell you, one of the things that Dan showed you, and, and you can see, other than San Marcos, everybody is way down here. Now, I would argue, that's not because San Marcos is crazy, that's because San Marcos is just where they need to be and everybody is lagging because we had Larry call around and go, hey, why is everybody else so low, do you want to touch on that?
Yeah, sure, so, a bunch of the cities on that list, and if we can go back, that'd be great. Some of the, say, smaller neighboring cities around us, they have a, quite a bit lower rate, right? And I've spoke to a bunch of the folks there and they, what they do is they cover their own M costs, specified personnel that do that work all the time, and then their general fund covers their projects. That, that's by and large what happens. A little bit larger entity down the road, spoke to a new director in Seguin, and, and so they have a very new program, right? They implemented this fee, fairly new, they're kind of doing the same thing. But again, they, with, with the recent events that they've had, they're, they're looking at this pretty hard, right? And then, and then all the way over on the other end, so, that particular person, I talked to somebody very familiar with the San Marcos program, and I'll tell you that they have a, they have a high fee and they have a very large drainage maintenance department, stormwater department, right? But they also supplement their projects with general fund dollars, so it doesn't, it is not a self-sufficient, nobody has a self-sufficient, completely self-sufficient program. And not to say that if we implement this, again, you see what happens all the time with project dollars, we might end up short when we look at the longer-range plan, and then we have to find a way to fund that. And so we can look at a different, different rate, or, or we can supplement it with general fund. Those are, those are all the questions that, that we're talking about with this.
All right, thank you for the explanation. Yes, Councilmember McEluso.
Can you bring up the slide that has the, the graph that shows the, the outlay and where, and where we're at with the expenses? Can you? No, it was, it was, it was more the bar graph that you had, that one there. So, going from $5.20 to $8 would essentially get us up to be self-sufficient to the 27?
Right.
Okay, so, if you maintain at that eight, or, if you maintain at eight, would it also remove the future cap outlays? Or is that only if it was increased to 15? Or when you say 15, are you saying that's covering the debt service as well?
The fif, the 15 will cover the debt service.
Okay.
If you get, if you fund all $42 million. If you look at the red, the capital outlays, they are a little higher in the early years and they get lower in the later years. And then you've also got growth, so if you set the fee at $8 and you keep it at $8, you will be able to fund your operating expenses and your capital outlays, but you won't be able to fund any debt.
So Dan, is it fair to say that the reddish capital outlay is a cash-funded capital outlay? And then the green would be where you go out and borrow larger chunks of money and then pay debt service?
Correct, uh-huh.
Which the debt service is what we've been presented with already, I mean, what the, what we've already been presented as, looking at pain for those projects.
Well, that would be a lighter increase, so the, the current increase kind of gets that blue and that red up a little bit. And then, in the future, when you raise it up to the full 15 over time, you would be able to fund the debt service that goes along with that green.
Okay, so when we had our CIP presentation, was it not inclusive of that debt service to pay for those projects?
The CIP list that we showed you when we did that presentation, right, that's what drove this dollar fee. So, Dan considered what we presented you and said, hey, here's all the stuff we need to do, and we're not gonna do it all overnight, it's gonna take us time to work through it. And he said, so if you want to maintain the stuff you have better, which we've heard about, right, and, and keep up with it, and you want to start doing these projects for that list that we showed you at the CIP, here is the way we would go up, right? We could today, not, not that we're recommending, is you could go up to the full max right now, and we could get a little quicker. We think, again, that's just more than people can afford to do right away, we think we need to work our way in. We also think we need to do the first year, let's see how we do, how much progress we're making, let's, you know, and then work it in that way. So, yeah, this fee is based on what you saw as the CIP.
And, and quite frankly, these are larger-scale capital projects, we couldn't manage that much workload and get it done, say, next year. It'll take several years to, to construct these.
And, and we're assuming that you fund the $42 million of capital improvements, $10 million at a time. You borrow $10 million each year, over the next 10, six to eight years, you, you borrow $10 million every other year. Because you don't borrow any more money than you need, you know, because then you're paying interest on it. So you borrow it in increments, see, that's why, that's why, as you can see, the green gets larger and larger over the, over the years, as you borrow more and more money. But, financial management is, is key to this, and, so the, the key question is, how much, how much do you want to borrow? When do you want to borrow it, and how do you finance it? And all those decisions will impact what your ultimate rate is gonna be. What we wanted to show you here was a trend, the trend is definitely heading upwards. The quest, but it's totally up to you to determine how high that, that ultimate number gets.
Right, and all, and all we're asking again right now is, the decision is, the first fee increase that, as we said, we'll come back for in that first year of, of projects, right? And just to be clear with the timing of this, even though council approves the budget first, we're not gonna start spending any of that money until we come back to the fee for this and that's approved, right? Because, because we don't want to put the cart before the horse. And again, as I said, we'll come back next year and we'll talk about what we want to do and we'll build off of that, right? And council may either say, look, that's a little too much too fast, it's working okay, we, we can, we can work it. But what we didn't want is, is one of y'all sitting there going, you know, they keep coming back every year for this fee, I thought they came back with what they needed. Wanted to make sure that you guys understood, to get where we think we need to be or want to be, this is what it would take and we can scale that accordingly.
Counsel, any other comments?
Yeah, I got it.
Yes, Councilman, Councilmember Gareto?
And, but, okay, so you're saying the, the $8, the fee, is that, is that guaranteed to stay all the way up into 2029?
So, that fee stays all the way up until you decide to change it, right? You reapprove the fee schedule every year. Now, what James tends to talk about, right, are the changes. But in the past, some who've been on council while, one of you could have plucked one of those numbers out. For example, you could have talked about the fee Lisa and Emily charged for a plat application and said, you guys aren't proposing to change it, but I want to talk about changing it. And so, right, the fee schedule comes to you every year, and so you would have the ability to, to change it however you wanted. But what we're proposing is, go to that $8 fee now, and then we'll come back and talk about it. Again, the idea would be we'd go up again, but let's see where we are and see how things are working.
But if there's no need to go up, then we don't, it, it can remain the same, right? If there's no need.
If, right, so, but again, understand this, what you could decide next year, for whatever reason, is we don't want to go up anymore, we want to stop there. But what that would mean is that those projects on the CIP list that we talked about, that we were assuming we would fund, they would not happen. So for example, the Wendy Swan Drainage Channel, that project, if you didn't go up on the fee and didn't fund it some other way, would not happen. That's, that's the implication on that, right? So we'd be able to kind of keep doing what we're doing, but these, these projects we need to do, we wouldn't be able to do if you didn't go up on the fee or you didn't fund in some other way, or we didn't cut some area and then, and then do something different. Right, because that Wendy Swan is what, over a million dollars, I think, something like that, right? And, and you look at it and you go, oh my God, that's insane, I agree, but it is.
All right, thank you.
Does that help?
Councilmember Hayward?
So when, we're talking about the $8 fee. If we went to an impervious surface area, does then, does this graph change significantly? Or does it stay the same?
The graph would, the graph would basically stay the same because the, the two alternatives are what are called revenue-neutral, they'll, they'll, they'll both get the same amount of revenue. But, the fee, the, the $8 fee would not have to go up as much to fund the $40 million as it would if you kept the current methodology. You see, if you fund all $40 million in projects, we're, we're saying you'll have to bring the fee up to $15, unresidential. If you change to impervious surface area, it would only go up to $12, so it's a $3 difference. But it also means that the commercial fee would be higher.
And I think, let me, let me chime in, I think, and, and I may be the only one, and, and I appreciate they're probably right, it's a little more fair that way. The, the problem though, when we sort of see this, right, it's too much changed too fast. So we haven't gone up on the fee in 12 years, we're wanting to go up on it, and then if we change the methodology, those businesses get a bit of that double whammy, right? Because remember, what a typical resident is seeing is about $3 per month, right? And, and so that adds up and they're paying another $33.60 a year, and death by 1,000 pinpricks, right? But remember we talked about like that Whataburger, for example? They're, they're seeing that increase as well, right? They're seeing an increase of about $13 a month. So they're seeing a couple hundred dollars in that industrial business, it's 140,000 square feet. They're going from $237 to $365, so they're seeing about $1,500 a year. If we add that change in methodology, that some point we probably do, but in my opinion, and I'm not saying I'm right, it's just a little too much change at once, then I'm having to explain why we're going up on the fee and why we changed the methodology. And to me, as we step our way into this, one of the things that we talked about today is, how do we get the word out to folks, right? Because nobody likes to sort of pay more, but we need to do it, there are implications and that which we've seen for not doing it. And so part of what we need to be spend the next six months, 12 months talking about are, this is what we're doing with that money, this is why it's important, this is how we're doing it, so that if we change the methodology, people are able to have a little more of an informed conversation to go, I get why you're doing this, now let's talk about the implications. And that, that's just my opinion on it, is to, to sort of ease our way into it with the series of. And that's just my opinion on it, is to sort of ease our way into it with a series of, not quite baby steps, but toddler steps, as opposed to a too big a leap right at once.
Oh, I wasn't thinking of going there, because they're already paying a lot of money for solid waste, so.
I didn't want to say that either, but thank you for bringing that up.
So I wasn't going there. And I just wanted to know, with the impervious surface area, how many cities actually do that?
Most cities do it that way.
So we're just different.
I would say between 80 and 90% of the cities charged by impervious surface area.
It's probably the way to go. I'm just not sure we need to do it.
No, I'm not ready to do that right now. I just, just asking questions for the future, as we were talking about, we have to make a decision going a certain way. I just wanted to get some clarification. But no, right now, I think they had enough, the businesses.
That's one of the other problems of not making any changes for seven years.
Yeah, it really is.
Councilmember Brown. Oh, oh. She's done, okay.
So I have one other thing. So as we go forward as council, we need to learn, we can't wait too long, because then it becomes a shock on the system, because we're waiting too long instead of doing it incrementally all the time.
Right. And I will say this, let me be blunt. Part of what we need to make sure is, as staff, we need to make sure, fair enough, that we were queued up, that we had a kind of our house in order, we had a good focus, right? Because what we don't want to do, and I think fair comment is, go up on this fee, and then we're scrambling to kind of manage that increased revenue flow, and people are going, what are you doing with the money? And so that was part of the reason the last couple of years, when we would talk about it, we didn't go up. Just wanted to make sure we were ready to go and queued up and ready to be able to show some results from it.
And another key component, if you'll remember, we've just recently compiled a comprehensive CIP and developed a more, kind of a broader look and kind of a more thorough look, so.
All right. Any other comments? So motion to approve ordinance number 25M034.
So moved.
Second.
That was Councilmember Davis, right? Second by Councilmember Watson. Counsel? All right. Councilmember Davis.
Aye.
Cassidy Road.
Aye.
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 We have seven ayes, no objection. Motion passes. It is 8:30. Let's go ahead and just take a 10-minute recess at this time. I'm tired.
Getting too old for this.
About. If who? If you cancel it, you.
One, two, three.
Well, he's still winning the straight. You. 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 You.
Okay, the time is eight forty-six. We reconvene after our small break here. Our next item is a public hearing, ordinance number twenty-five T zero-three-two. Conduct a public hearing and adopt a budget for the fiscal year twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-six annual budget. Mr. Walters, floor is yours.
Good evening again, Mayor and Council. What's your overview? City staff prepared a budget with these five goals in mind. Staff compensation, street maintenance and repair, capital improvement program, the increasing staffing levels and new remodel facilities, in no particular order. Twenty-five, twenty-six operating budget, overall for the, all the different funds. The health insurance, we had, we had talked about briefly. I'll say you saw about no RFPs. There's no increase to pay cost increases. Their staff will be proposing that actual change in a later date. There are some slight modifications to that, which we'll go over there. Any budgetary changes would be minimal. Merit step program is, is in the budget as proposed. Seven hundred eighty-four thousand dollars to take effect on average mid-year for staff here in the city through all the different funds. Now, fund expenditures, the increase of about two-point-two percent from the original budget, a decrease of about two-point-two percent from the amended budget for the current year. This does include the full year funding of all approved positions, as well as the merit and step updates I mentioned. Also has supplemental requests, which is a request for additional funding. All that's offset by lower capital expenditures, which is fewer replacements. This year, we also had a fire engine replacement, which increased artificially our capital replacement costs. And then we budget additional street maintenance funds this year as well, that were more one-time in nature. The final amended budgets, you see it going up in increase, but we're proposing to decrease slightly next year. The supplemental request currently as proposed was equal to two-point-eight million dollars. Included assistant city secretary position, higher special election costs, utility rate increases, so other utilities imposing their rates on us for electricity, gas, and fuel. Postage increase, credit card services increase. The more people pay with a credit card, the higher credit card fees the city receives. The EMS contract update, providing EMS services for the city of shirts. SCBA replacements, those are the firefighter breathing takes and equipment that you see on all their propaganda. Firefighters for Station Four, going to finish hiring the process for those firefighters. Those are planned to be at the end of the fiscal year to minimize their budgetary impacts and line up closer to when the Station Four does open. We are applying a grant for those, so if a grant is received, we'll have additional funding. We'll be able to move up and hire those firefighters sooner. Does include the merit and steps in that two-point-eight million dollar. Also includes some cybersecurity updates, a PA system for the library, new security cameras and licenses to operate those cameras here at this current facility. Fire hose equipment, includes soccer complex operations, the senior center operations, the police radio renewal, those are the replacements for the police radios. Replace network switches, software police, software for police vehicle computers, upgrade in the Microsoft and Adobe licenses, and the A-two program for the city manager. The debt service fund, the INS rates proposed and calculated at sixteen-eighty-one. Those include all current existing debt payments, as well as upcoming program debt issuances at no further increases, estimated six million dollars in six, twenty-six, twenty-seven, fourteen-point-eight in twenty-seven, twenty-eight, six million in twenty-eight, twenty-nine, and forty in thirty, thirty-one. This is a graph of the chart of the debt service as it goes on. The gray is our current obligations. You'll see next year we have an increase based on the debts we just issued and received just last week. We actually got the money in. Next year, it drops off as our, some bonds expire, payments start to get lower. We'll kind of build up the balance and then continue to start issuing debt again over time, building up a balance for that big twenty-thirty-one bond issuance. One of the water and sewer fund, it included nine hundred and forty-four thousand supplemental requests. Those are offset by the utility rate increases. It does have the merit program that has some ongoing operating costs for the utility billing operations, includes a training fund increase, leak detectors, water wastewater worker one, the mini excavator hydro hammer and a light crew truck. Also includes an aerial bucket truck, zero-turn mower, heavy-duty dovetail, a ten-yard dump truck. It includes an entire crew for the water wastewater, which includes three FTEs. Those are two worker ones and a worker two, and then a crew leader to oversee those folks. It also has additional funds for hydrant valve replacements. So I mentioned before, we just had passed the rate increases. About a dollar twenty on the water, the two percent, and a dollar twenty-six, three percent increase on the sewer rates. This is a forecast of their five-year funding program, twenty-six, twenty-seven. And their fund balance percentage drops to thirty-two. And then as we start doing some more capital work, paying with cash instead of issuing more debt, which will still be issuing debt, but we'll have some more cash contributions, which is why the expenses in those years increased quite a bit. So we're going to do a big capital contribution here to pay cash on a big capital project. The goal is to getting that down to a twenty-six percent fund balance level. The EMS fund, we just upgraded, updated the fees, hundred dollars each on the transportation service, resulting in about a million-dollar increase in revenue. And then we also updated the local, interlocal contracts. They include five hundred and twenty-three thousand in supplemental programs, including a billing server implementation, the utility increases, the merit step program, two full-time EMTs for Medic Eight, which is a, Medic is an ambulance, so they're going to run those, and then two EMTs for Medic Nine, so those are two additional ambulances that will run during peak times. We also, and then hired those mid-year as well to minimize their impact. It also includes the maintenance agreement and the EMS consultants that we had talked about before to look in to see if we can make any efficiency upgrades to our operations and help control costs going forward. So the EMS fund, you see their cash balance currently in the negative, but with the changes in the fees proposed this year, as well as the contract upgrade, updates with all the other agencies, we plan to be out of the, that position by twenty-seven, twenty-eight. The drainage fund, so we talked about areas that flood in the city of shirts. Why this, the fee is important, as well as what can happen in areas that don't have adequately maintained drainage channels and floodways. Another area along the left-hand side here, and then the right-hand side, bordering us on both sides. And so we had talked about drainage rates before in the previous one. Again, they had not been approved yet. We'll come back and discuss. This is just the history of the drainage rates that go into the budget. Originally adopted in two thousand and two at two-ten, we're now at the five-twenty since twenty-twelve, thirteen, and the current proposal for operations is eight dollars. So that will fund, the eight-dollar increase will fund the operation adjustments that are proposed in the budget, which include personnel and equipment, as well as starting some work on some larger projects. And then again, we had talked about going forward, if we, when we evaluate those larger capital projects that are tied to that big twelve, fifteen-dollar potentially rate increase, if we wanted to fund it all through drainage fund, if we all wanted to fund it in this timeframe. We'll be reviewing that with council in out-years to see if we want to continue on with those rates. Does include one-point-two million dollars in supplemental requests, includes the merit, the MS four floodplain administrator, that's a new position, updates to the master drainage plan, Sibyllo Creek tree removal, railroad right-of-way cleanup, and then a, three drainage worker ones and a drainage worker two in a vehicle, and drainage crew leader, an entire another drainage crew to help work on drainage issues in our current drainage ways throughout the city. Also includes a haul trailer, dump trailer, and a UTV. The drainage fund, over time, so we'll make a big capital, much of capital purchases now. Use up some of our fund balance, as well as raising the rate, and then start to kind of keep that fund balance relatively flat in the out-years as we work in our existing programs, and then additional capital replacement on our equipment to match those increases. We talked about the capital improvement program, touch on this real quick. In the twenty-five, twenty-six, next year, we plan to have up to ten projects in streets, parks, and facilities ongoing at a, at a time, up to forty-three-point-three million dollars being spent. In the water sewer, we have up to twenty projects planned to be ongoing. Total estimated being spent seventy-five million, three-hundred-and-sixty-seven thousand. Drainage CIP will have two projects starting up at one-point-one million. And then the budget options, we had talked about before with council during the retreat. As well, we touched on them briefly during the setting the preliminary tax rate. We had heard back then, council wanted to look at different options. We had the no new revenue rate, which has a one-time street and sidewalk funding program. So it's the same rate the staff presented, same budget, but with one additional, or some additional one-time funds. We can go up to a rate of point-five-one-one-eight, adding a reoccurring, the street and sidewalk fund. So the same deal, but instead of a one-year funding, we make that ongoing. Or we instead add a one percent COLA with one-time street and sidewalk projects at that five-one-one-eight. Or another item that we had heard from council going up to five-one-ninety, adding reoccurring street and sidewalks and the one percent COLA, which is a cost of living update. We'll pause here for discussion, if you have any questions, or if you want to open up to public hearing. We can do that and come back for questions on the budget.
Thank you, Mr. Walters. All right, this is on the agenda as an open, a public hearing. The time is eight-fifty-seven. Is there anyone in attendance who'd like to address the council regarding the budget? Please step up to the mic. It's an open mic. You have three minutes. Please state your name and address.
Hello, my name is Sarah Dunlap, and I'm speaking on behalf of Homestead Residential Master Association, located at five-eight-five-three Homestead Parkway. Homestead is a large master plan community with, when it's built out, have thirteen-hundred-and-fifty homes. It, Homestead Parkway runs from I-thirty-five, and by the end of this year, will run all the way to Green Valley. So it will provide a thorough fare for shirts and Sibyllo residents to get to I-thirty-five. At this point, we have zero crosswalks on Homestead Parkway, and I'm here to advocate for crosswalks across the street to the amenity center. And that, I believe, was presented in your traffic safety package.
Thank you. All right. Is there anyone else who'd like to address the council?
Hello, I'm Todd Vissin, eighty-nine, twenty-six, Green Grant. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members. I'd encourage you to thoughtfully consider the tax rate and the, and the no new revenue tax rate. Just looking at the numbers from the site, if you just take a four-hundred-thousand-dollar house, you know, it's only a five-hundred-and-sixty-dollar increase to go from the no new revenue to the proposed minimum increase. But that's in the context, obviously, of a, of an over three, three percent tax bill for Bear County residents. These numbers are important, but I'd really like to talk about people. My wife and I, when we moved here, we purchased a small home in twenty-twenty to rent it out. We purposely set the rent low enough for a small, young family to afford, because we were offered that opportunity when we were young, growing up and had two young children by a landlord that looked at that as an opportunity to serve others as well. But in the five years since we bought that house, the appraised value's gone up forty percent. The tax bill has gone up twenty-six percent, so we raised the rate for the rent twenty-seven percent, really just to cover our expenses of the taxes, insurance, and unexpected maintenance. And so since we began that business, we rented to three tenants. One was reassigned, but the other two moved out as the rent increased. So this summer, we decided to sell because we couldn't keep increasing the rent and cover our costs. We basically broke even. But the story is, is not really about us, it's about those people. Because some people say renters don't suffer, they don't pay the price when property taxes goes up, but that's, that's a misnomer. Especially, so it affects those, the least among us, when they're taxed out of their rental home. One of the families that we rented to opened their home to neighbors for coffee and fellowship. They wanted to make, they were renters, but they wanted to make their neighborhood better. They moved out of the area for a better cost of living. And so now, we sold that house, but it's, it's still vacant, and is, as is the one next to that as well. So I think I, you know, we love living in shirts, but I and many families, like the ones we wanted to serve, I think would appreciate and benefit from good affordable housing. And we'd be grateful if the council would consider selecting the no new revenue tax rate for the next year. Thank you.
Right, is there anyone else who'd like to address the council in reference to this subject? Going once, going twice. All right, time is nine-oh-one, public hearing is closed. Before we start discussing our, our budget, it'd be interesting to find out exactly where the council sits, so that we can start moving the budget items, or removing them, or bringing them up. So with that, I'd like to go ahead and impose the council here as to what tax rate they are proposing, so that we can go into the budget and, and move the items around. And I'll start us off. I, I would like to see the tax rate at fifty-sixty-four. Councilmember Guerrero, you're next.
I want to see the tax rate at point-fifty-one-ninety, supporting COLA and the streets.
Okay, we just need to know the rate. We'll, we'll go into discussion at the budget here, okay? Councilmember McAdooso?
The no new revenue rate.
Fifty-sixty-four, okay. Councilmember Westbrook?
I think it was option three, but fifty-one-ninety, fifty-one-eighty-eight.
Councilmember Watson?
Fifty-one-ninety.
Councilmember Hayward?
Fifty-one-ninety.
Councilmember Brown?
Fifty-one-eighteen.
Council, Councilmember Davis? Fifty-sixty-four, okay. So we're within range. We know we're going to bring it down from the preliminary rate that we set a couple of weeks ago. We just have to find a consensus of where we're going to end up looking at these numbers. It's going to take a five-two vote, and we don't have that at this point. So with that, let's open it up for discussion. Okay, Councilmember Guerrero?
Yes, I'm totally in favor of supporting the COLA, which is very important, and the streets. Matter of fact, we just had somebody comment on that, so definitely, I'm in favor of COLA. I'm in favor of, of maintenance on our streets and sidewalks. That's where I stand.
Councilmember Brown?
I truly believe we need to stick with the COLA. Again, we've seen the consequences of waiting too long to keep up with our, with our pay scales for our people. And that is a, to me, it's a, it's a no-brainer when you look at the surrounding cities. They're averaging three, four, five percent COLAs. One percent is almost a slap in the face, but at least it's something.
Before I open it up for someone else, the reason I said fifty-sixty-four, the no new revenue rate, is that we're focusing on the COLA. San Antonio is giving a two percent COLA, no merit. Sibyllo is giving a COLA, no merit. We are providing our, our staff an increase, a step increase or merit increase. So it's not like we're not providing any type of increase. The numbers, the numbers that, that you're, that are being quoted out there are not a true, a true evaluation of what is happening at that city. Yes, they might have a two percent, but they have no merit. We're doing a one percent, we have a four percent merit. That's almost a five percent increase. And, and it's not that I'm saying we don't value our staff, but we have to find a perfect balance as to what we're going to pay our staff and how much of a burden we're going to put on our taxpayers. And the burden we're talking about is wastewater. It's going up. Water, it's going up. Solid waste, it's going up. School taxes are going up from one-thirteen to one-nineteen. The county is going up also, and we are also going up on our rate. Just how much? I don't know. We're putting too much burden on our taxpayers when everything else is increasing on them. And these pennies add up to quarters, and it hurts our residents. And like I said, I value our staff, but at what point? Where is the perfect balance? And that's the difficult part that we're having here. And that's why we have so many different numbers that were quoted. That's why I wanted the, the council to take a closer look at the, at the COLAs that were around here. And like I said, San Antonio, our biggest suburb, they were giving the three percent COLA. They dropped it down to two. We're at a four percent merit. We're at a 4% merit, and you want to add another one. That's why I want you to really consider what's going on in our area here. So with that, who else? Councilmember Hayward?
Okay, just off of what you said, merit, everyone doesn't get that, you have to earn that. So, saying that we're giving them 5%, some people might, but everybody's not going to get a merit or a step program. So, if that is what the hangup is, why not just say we give everyone a 3% merit or step, and then give them a 1% raise? The 1% is actually from last year, when they wanted, whatever it was, I don't remember the actual number, we dropped it from that number to 1%. So we're only giving this, that, this back. The other thing that I think about is all the money that we spent to make people at market. The other thing is we've changed for healthcare, they're going to have to have more of an out-of-pocket cost, the least we could do is help them with that out-of-pocket cost and give them 1% COLA. And even when I think about the COLA, the COLA is probably just going to pay for some of their tax rate that's going to come out because of income tax. And so, I, I don't see it as giving somebody 5% because everyone's not getting merit. And then for me, I look at, we spend all that money, we don't need to go backtrack, we need to make sure that we're doing recurring streets and sidewalks, because those are safety issues. And we keep kicking, the whole thing about this is, it's hard to make the decision to actually raise the tax rate, because I'm paying that same tax rate than everybody else is. And when I think about that, I think about the state. We are, have the disabled veterans Homestead exemption, I think it's a great program. The state is not doing their part by reimbursing us for what we are not getting, that is $5 million off of property values that we are not getting because of this exemption program, great program. But they're only putting $9.5 million into that program when 12 cities are trying to take from that, that pot. So this time, they gave us 17% back, at almost $700,000. They voted to open up for three more counties, so can you imagine what we're not going to get if they don't? And we kept, last year, we said, oh, we'll wait and see what the state's going to do, so we won't do this. The state still didn't do their part. We keep asking them to do their part. They need to put $54 million into the coffers, so that we can then do what we need to do, and we wouldn't be here, we would actually be lowering the tax rate if the state would do their part. But they're not. And so we have, and, and as much as I, it pains me to say, I have to do this on the backs of my taxpayers, because the state won't do their job, and then they make it seem like it's the cities that are out of control, when they're the ones that are sending down these unfunded mandates, or underfunded mandates, and then tell the city, hey, here's what you got to do, this is the law, here's what you got to do, now you figure out how to pay for it. And then we have to try to figure out how to pay for it, and then it becomes on the burdens of our taxpayers. Because we can't keep kicking the can down the road for things that we need to do, because those things that we keep kicking down the road, they only get more expensive as you go on. And I will tell you, I can be physically conservative, but I'm not going to be to the point where it's going to be a detriment to us later. So five years from now, 10 years from now, just like we talked about the drainage fund, we have to raise it $8. Didn't do that, didn't do that in seven years, we had a solid waste contract, that had been done in seven years. So everything that we wait to keep doing, it costs the taxpayers more. If we just do everything incrementally, it levels itself out. So I think we need to start thinking about those things, and understanding that we're just doing the job that needs to be done, because the state isn't doing it. So the next session, we can try to get the state to do their part, but as of now, we can't, so we have to help and do the things that need to be done in the city of shirts, to make sure people are getting the quality of life and the things that they deserve. And the, and the staff is getting what they need when we spent $2 million to bring them all up to market rate. Every time we don't do something, we go backwards, and then we'll have to say, well, we can't do this program, and we can't buy this, and we can't buy that, because now, two years from now, we got to do $2 more million to bring everybody back to market rate. We didn't do it the one time to just keep backsliding, we have to think things through and be methodical about it, and quit kicking the can down the road and doing the right things, and making sure that our people are safe in our city. That's all.
Councilmember Westbrook?
Yes, Mayor. Based upon what I heard, maybe the, we can settle at option number three, the 5118. I heard two individuals, including myself, say 5190, I thought it was 5188. But I think with option number three, with 5118, we get the COLA, and then we do get something for streets and sidewalk. So with the exception of the two individuals that said no new revenue, that would leave us with five, if the other five could sort of settle on either two or three. Either way, it's at the 5118 rate. So I'm looking at 5118, hopefully no, option number three.
Okay, I went ahead and adjusted that number. Councilmember McAluso?
Yeah, I support a lot of what the mayor said. And going back to the merit, if an employee's not getting a merit, it should be questioned whether we should even have him on the staff. So, merit increases are fairly common, and in private business, COLA is almost unheard of, and so it's kind of more of a government issue. But, you know, it says no new revenue rate, but in reality, it is a tax rate increase, it's not going to be for everyone, but it is for some. We have increased our, our rates on, on just about everything we have, and so people are going to see a difference in, in what the cost is going to be to them. And so to go back and say, well, we want to give the, the staff a 1% COLA, and, and to do that, we're going to increase the tax rate even higher, I, I just don't, I don't see that as, as being fair to the citizens. And, you know, we're going to have time, especially when our new shirt station opens up, and we have a lot higher sales tax revenue coming in, there's going to be times where our, our budget looks a lot healthier, and, and maybe that can be done at that time. But in, in a time where some of the residents' home values are going down, but they're not going to be able to actually see that benefit of, of a lower tax rate, I just think going back to them and asking them for more is, is just not what I support.
Councilmember Davis?
Yeah, I, I have to take exception to Councilwoman Hayward's comments. As the mayor pointed out, every city around us is doing something different. We just, in the last year, spent a significant amount of resources raising compensation across the city. At the no new revenue rate, that includes a 4% step for all public safety, police, fire, EMS, correct? And, we opted to go with the merit. The merit is as high as 4%, so the, the employees that are performing, status factoring above are looking anywhere from 2% to 4% as, as a, as a pay raise. And if I recall correctly from my time on council, the vast majority of employees qualify for a merit. I see a couple of the staff over there shaking their head north and south, agreeing with me. I, I know there's an exception, that if you haven't been a, a full-time employee for a certain amount of time, they don't fall into the merit program, which makes sense, they're brand-new employees. But, I, 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 I think it's safe to say that our city leadership has been generous with the merit program. And I have to take exception with, with the comments about working with the state. You saw the, the budget process, and if you looked at the previous slides, the Texas Legislature is doing a phenomenal job of finding every way they can to hamstring us on our budget process. Whether it's the veterans exemption, or exemptions for disabled folks, or disabled, or, or exemptions for senior citizens, and we can argue the merits of any one of those programs, at the end of the day, arguing with the state of Texas Legislature has been a failure for the past five years, because alls they do is keep on passing on more exemptions, and dumping it on our lap to try to figure out how to do it. You know, we wouldn't be having any of these discussions if our budget shortfall, our revenue shortfall hasn't gone up to 5 and 1/2, 5 and 1/4, 5 and 1/2 million dollars this year. I, I, I value all of our employees, I want to make sure that they get paid a fair salary, a good salary, and take care of them. But you know, I, I, at the end of the day, what's the point of having an employee if we don't have the materials to fix a sidewalk, or fix a street? I, I lean towards the no new revenue rate, because like I said, I think we are taking care of our employees. I could be swayed to the 5118, but I would look at option two, because, I mean, how many meetings have we had from the city staff where they're showing us a, a graphic display of all the potholes we're fixing, and all the streets we're fixing, and the, I don't know how many thousands of linear feet of streets that don't have sidewalks? We're talking about an issue up in a brand-new development. But I mean, look at the center part of shirts. And if we don't look at funding those aspects, I, I, I tell you what, I can tell you the slope that we're on. Our revenue stream, because of the, the limitations being put on us by the Texas Legislature, are going to get tougher and tougher every year. And I don't see them capitulating and, and making exceptions, and I certainly don't see them offering out of their $24, $25 billion rainy day fund that they're sitting on, coming, come up with any solution to help the city of shirts or any other city out there. So again, I, I hear what the rest of the council's saying, I do believe that we are taking care of our employees, we've just did a comp study, we, we adjusted a lot of salaries, we, we made them competitive, I think with the steps and the merits, we are, for at least the next year, staying competitive. But again, I think at the end of the day, we still have to take care of the, the physical resources that we need in the city.
Mayor, you can move me to .518, number three, where we do the COLA and the one-time streets and sidewalks, and then we'll start budgeting in streets and sidewalks maybe next year.
You know, there's, there's a lot of interesting points that, I mean, we just started a discussion, a lot of interesting points that were brought up. You know, Councilmember Hayward indicated that the, you know, the state mandates on the disabled vet, and she went up there and she advocated for more funds. The Northeast Partnership, a lot of us mayors went up there and advocated, but it's not going to happen, because you're, you, you got to get so many, so many state legislators to, to see our side. And when they don't live here, they have no idea what, what, how they're hurting this city and other cities. And I just don't see it, that it's going to come anywhere soon. The good thing that we have in shirts is a shirt station. It's, 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 we're, we're starting to see the, the groundbreaking on several projects that are there. Hopefully, our new, one of our new stores will open up in December. So there is, there is a bright light coming up. The question is, can, can we hold off? Can our, you know, can this council say, well, maybe next year, we can, we can make a difference? But we don't know, we don't know what the future holds. We don't know whether or not, you know, how, whether or not we fill in those storefronts that are going to be available. But the burden is, these rates is a burden we're putting on our residents. But I'll go, I went ahead and made the change to 118, option number two, if I'm not mistaken. Number three?
Mayor?
Yes?
So, what I'm hearing is, six out of seven of us have agreed to some, some, whether two or three, 5118. So if we can maybe do a roll call and see how, who's in favor of two or number three, maybe we can sort of narrow this argument? Because we're not at 5190, and we're not at number one.
We're not even at 5118 at this point, because I have three individuals at 5118.
There should be four.
I'm, I'm 5118.
Okay, Watson is at 5118?
Did Davis said begrudgingly?
Davis is at 5118?
And, Councilmember Guerrero, I think, said 5190, but I'm imagining he could be persuaded to maybe go 5118?
Well, it, it, well, it, it, maybe, but it just, it just, it's sad in that we have the state that's not giving us our money, that money is owed to us. And I believe, in history, masses of people have made things happen, and if we bombard our state representative, even if we have to go to Austin, I'm willing to do that. They owe us that money. We wouldn't be talking about the tax rate today if they paid us that money.
You made a point there, but that's not going to happen for another two years when they come back in session.
We have two years left, two years to go in session. They are looking at an expenditure cap in this session. So, we're looking at a whole lot of things, and we also, what we need is, as we talk about more people, when we went up to fight for that, we need to get everyone else on board with this, so that it becomes a whole state issue. Because we tend to get something back, but the cities that don't touch the base, they get nothing back. And so, we just have to have more people. I can tell you that this session, we had more people go up, and there was a lot of things that we stopped, that were bad bills, there were some that we just couldn't, but we didn't have a lot of people on our side, and we just have to do, educate, and maybe it's reaching out to residents, just as a thing going forward. It doesn't do us any good now. But in the, in the next two years, we need the residents of shirts saying, hey, state, give us our money. But right now, we have to come up with a rate plan, because, because we still have to get things done in the city, and we have to make sure that we're not continually kicking the can down the road for things that need to be done. And that's just kind of where I, I sit, and I can be, I prefer the point, the 5190, but if we need a consensus so that we can get five people, I can possibly live with number three, 5118, adding the COLA and the one-time streets, and then looking at the budget next year to try to figure out how we get the streets on a recurring process.
All right, listening to the council, I think we have five at 5118. The question is whether or not we go with option two or option three. So, if I'm not mistaken, Councilmember Davis, 5118, Councilmember Watson, 5118, Councilmember McAluso, 5064, Councilmember Guerrero, 5190, Councilmember Westbrook, 5118, Council, Councilmember Hayward, 5118, and Mayor Pro Tem Brown at 5118, am I correct? Okay, so now, now we got to look at option two or three. I think that would be our next debate here, and see exactly where we want to fall on this 5118. So with that, let's open it up for discussion here.
Option three.
So we have, that's, Councilmember Brown, is, did you say three or four, three?
Three, that gives us, that gives us COLA, right? The COLA and the streets one time.
We're at four at three, at least in what I count.
Okay.
Is there five, is there a fifth one at three?
Well, let's go, let's go down. Councilmember Davis, any option two or three?
Why don't you just do, sorry, sorry, Mayor.
Okay, Councilmember Davis?
Option two.
Three.
McAluso?
One.
Three.
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 Okay. We have a consensus of option three at a 5118 rate, is what we're looking at, at this point. Now, council, this is, this is a budget, you can still say nay if you don't agree when you have, when you cast your vote, that you're not in favor of option two or three, it's entirely up to you. The consensus has to be at 5118 with five votes with option three. So, any other comments?
If there is a, if there is a motion, could the motion be made to adopt the ordinance and add a 1% COLA with one-time streets and sidewalks? Now we have a...
Ma, Mayor?
Yes?
So we've, we've, we've all addressed COLA and employee pay. I need to hear more about recurring street, sidewalks versus one-time streets and sidewalks. I'm not trying to change my mind, I'm just sort of saying, if we've already talked about COLA and pay, but we really haven't talked about recurring streets versus one-time streets, if somebody could, if you could sort of talk to me about what that looks like, recurring versus one-time?
So, the, the street funding would be $100,000, right? $100,000 or $150,000?
$100,000.
$100,000 into our general street maintenance. The, the sidewalks are projects that have been identified by T-SAC, where they've identified a list of projects, it comes up to the additional amount, James, break those amounts down for me, please. But, it's a one-time project, so if we were to add them in on an ongoing basis, it would add the, the lump of money into the, the ongoing street maintenance money for just general street maintenance, and then for T-SAC to essentially use each year to address hotspot issues like up in Homestead.
That is correct. We will repair sidewalks in the amount of $100,000, and then traffic safety issues in the amount of $315,000. in the amount of $315,000. But then they will have, these are not reoccurring. Next year, we will have to discuss that option if it's available.
Refund those programs, that would be an option next year. But it would not be proposed as a, a base budget type item where we would, it would be in there immediately.
So once we reach the $100,000 on sidewalks, it stops there, and then next year, we'll bring it back up if the funds are available.
Yes, sir.
Mayor? I, I move to approve Resolution 25R 110 with the updated language as follows. This budget will raise more, more total property taxes than previous year by $1,597,093 or 5.8 increase, and of that amount, $1,205,226 is taxed to be raised from new property added to the tax roll this year.
Second.
That's option three.
Yes.
Okay. We have a motion made by Councilmember Brown, second by Councilmember...
Second.
Clarify, I believe you said resolution, they should have, should have been by ordinance.
Yes. Can you, can you, um, state the ordinance number and then just, and add 1% COLA with one-time streets and sidewalks funding? That one was a, a resolution that's coming up next.
You did the one, Earth.
Resolution 25R 110?
Yeah, this will be, uh, ordinance, um...
25T 32.
25T 32.
And Mayor, did you not say that we're not voting on that tonight?
We're not voting on item 16.
Oh, okay. All right. So on item 25R 110, we can add $315,000 for traffic safety projects and $100,000 for sidewalk repair and installation, and $317,000 for 1% COLA.
Uh, ordinance 25T 32, uh, adopting a budget and adding a 1% COLA with one-time streets and sidewalks funding.
Second.
Okay. We have motion made by Councilmember Brown, second by Councilmember Watson. Council, any other comments? Okay. We'll go ahead and call for the vote. Councilmember Brown?
Aye.
Nay?
Aye.
Nay.
Aye.
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 We have five ayes, two objections. All right. We are moving down to item number 15, Resolution Number 25R 110, ratify the property tax increase reflected on the adopted budget for FY 2025 and 2026. Mr. Walters?
Uh, good evening. This item, uh, the, the state has us adopt a budget, and if that budget was estimated to raise more property taxes in the year prior, council has to take a separate vote on the budget, uh, stating with the language that's, that's in front of you ratifying the additional property taxes. And then they have you come back and vote for the actual property tax rate. So we actually vote three times on what's essentially getting us all funded and planned for the next year. So the resolution that was submitted to council was based at the no new revenue rate, which matched the original budget. Since we made adjustments to that budget, that is estimated to then raise the, um, additional property taxes, we require additional property taxes. Um, and so you have to amend that, uh, resolution as submitted, and you can use the language below, uh, or on the screen to, to do so. This is, uh, not setting the tax rate again. This is just saying, yeah, we adopted a budget, and we think this is what it'll take in property taxes to make it work.
All right. Council, comments, questions?
Make a motion.
Yes?
I move to approve Resolution 25R 110 with the updated language. This budget will raise more total property tax than previous year by $1,597 and 93, no, $1,597.93 or 5.8% increase, and that amount of $1,205, 226 is taxed to be raised from new property added to the tax rolls this year.
Second.
Have motion made by Councilmember Hayward, second by Councilmember Watson. Council, any other comments? We'll call for the vote. Councilmember Hayward?
Aye.
Aye.
Nay?
Aye.
Nay.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. We have five ayes, two objections. Motion passes. We do have a public hearing concerning the, uh, ordinance and the appraisal rates. Uh, that's ordinance number 25T 033, conduct a public hearing and approve the ordinance approving the appraisal roll, setting the tax rate, levying the, and accessing general and special avalanche taxes for the use and support of municipal government of the city of Shirts, Texas. Mr. Walters?
Uh, on this particular item, um, we discovered that the notice on our website was not sufficient to meet the state standards, and so council will not actually be able to adopt the tax rate at tonight's meeting. Uh, we will republish the notice and, uh, actually adopt the rate at the next meeting, um, on September 2nd. So everything will be updated and notified there. Uh, we can still hold the public hearing and go over the tax rate, and we've had a lot of discussion on it. Um, but we apologize for that, that oversight, and we'll get that updated and corrected. Uh, what we're talking about tonight, um, if we still want to hold, if we still want to hold the public hearing, the property tax values, the 2024 property tax value, last year, the year in right currently right now is $5.5 billion. Those same properties overall actually decreased to $5.4 billion, um, losing about $83 million overall. Uh, then we added $255 million in new, new developments and annexations overall, then increasing the taxable value of $172 million to $5.7 billion. As we were talking about before, the DVHS, uh, total, uh, value exempt has reached over $1 billion, which equates to about $5.7 million in, uh, potential tax revenue. Or we could then put all that towards our tax rate and lower it down to, uh, 40.91 cents, down from the, the 49 it is currently. We're estimating about 23% of homesteads in, uh, the city of Shirts actually has the DVHS exemption for this upcoming tax year, so almost one in, uh, one in four, um, homesteads are exempt from property taxes. So what happened with our property taxes this year? We had an increase in new construction and annexations, uh, which really helped us and saved us. We had, um, Goulou County residential homestead value actually decreased by $192 million. Uh, that's after new homes being added. Overall revenue lost about $640,000 at the current rate. Uh, we also had the DVHS increase by 8.6%. And on top of that, this year, we also got, uh, to effect the DVHS retroactive adjustments. So it looks like a bunch of exemptions got approved this year, and then actually remained retroactive, so we lost about another 700, or $675,000 in refunds. So our revenue this year was, was, uh, uh, lower than what we did, we were anticipating. We talked about the no new revenue rate, uh, tax rate, which will generate the same amount of revenue for the city from property on the previous year's tax roll. The voter approval rate, which is the highest rate council can adopt without triggering an automatic election, uh, the current was 49, uh, the no new revenue rate was 5064, and the voter approval was 5350. Um, what that looks like on the MNO, the MNO, um, will update based on what the council has, has adjusted, um, would, would proposably set, um, at the, uh, then I have a different rates for these. The voter approval, uh, would be, um, estimated bill increase of 94.91 or a 5.6% increase. The, uh, vote that, um, we will be looking at tonight, the 5188, um, is, updates that number to, um, to the 5118 would be a 17.92 estimated average bill increase or a 1.1% increase on the tax rate. And I go, I have that a little bit later. Um, this is all based on the no new revenue tax rate. But we looked at option three, um, sorry, option two, my apologies, option three on the budget, but option two on the tax rate. The 5118 would move the, uh, tax rate to 5118, which is effectively a 1.1% increase on the tax rate. The MNO would be 34, 37, and the INS would be the 1681. Council like to open up for a public hearing or if you want to table the item until next time?
All right. Thank you, Mr. Walters. All right. This item is on the agenda, is an open public hearing, and the time is 9:36. Is there anyone in attendance who'd like to address the council related to this subject? Mics open, anyone interested in addressing the council? Going once, going twice. The time is 9:36. Public hearing is closed. At this point, I don't think our council has any questions, so we will hold another public hearing, uh, for September 2nd.
Yes.
And we will address this issue and make the final determination at that point. Thank you, Mr. Walters. All right. We have a workshop. Discuss land use regulations the council desires to adopt and enforce via the ordinance, given their authority to regulate the land uses in the area in the matter that, matter recommended by the most recent joint land use study pending on the outcome of the November 5th, 2025 special elections. Okay.
Yes. Good evening, Mayor, City Council, city staff. Uh, tonight's item is a workshop for council to discuss which land use regulations council could adopt via an ordinance if given the authority to regulate land uses in the area in the manner recommended by the most recent JLUSS, which is the Joint Land Use Study, um, depending on the outcome of the, the, excuse me, depending on the outcome of the November 4th, 2025 special election. Just a little history, on August 5th, 2025, council did pass a Resolution 25R 101 ordering a special election. The special election is, uh, for qualified voters of a specific area situated within Shirts, ETJ, and within five miles of the joint-based San Antonio-Randolph boundary. They will have, uh, option to vote, uh, with proposition A of choosing full annexation or allowing the city to, uh, regulate zoning or land use. Uh, before you, is a map of the property that we're speaking of, which is in the green And all these properties are in Bear County. The proposition, again, here's the exact language. Um, let's see. The special election only has one proposition, proposition A. The option one would be voting if the residents of the vote, the registered voters chose option one, they would be voting to be fully annexed and receive city services. Uh, if they chose option two, they would allow the city of Shirts to regulate land use and recu- regulate land use that is recommended by the most recent joint land use study. And there's that option number two, the actual language. When the, for the election results, the option which receives the most votes will affect all the properties on the map. Leaving the ballot blank or voting for both option and one will result in the authorization of option two. Some other notes of interest, um, notifications of public hearings. A certified letter was sent out to all those affected residents of Bear County on Tuesday, August 12th, and it included a copy of the Resolution 25R 101, which was the order for the special election, the explanation of the special election, the map of the areas that are affected in this, in the city's extra territorial jurisdiction. A notice, um, the November 4th, 2025 special election will be published once in the San Antonio newspaper on October 15th, 2025. The city of Shirts will conduct two public hearings to be held on Tuesday, September 2nd and Tuesday, Sep- September 16th at the council chambers at 6:00 PM. Both of those meetings are during a council meeting. And I'll now pass it over to our Deputy City Manager, Brian James.
So, so a couple things to sort of set the stage for this. As Sheila just explained, folks have two options, right? Either full annexation, or again, as I've talked to folks out there, probably the lesser of two evils, the way they view it, which is land use controls, uh, based on the most recent JLUSS study. Um, you know, the examples we have of this, I think in 2018, city of San Antonio conducted these sort of votes for Camp Bullis and Lackland, and I think about 85% of the voters chose the latter option. So while we assume it's going to go that way, we'll, we'll kind of spend the time focus on it. One thing to keep in mind is the most recent JLUSS was done, uh, 10 years ago, uh, back in July of, of 2015. As that gets updated, our assumption is what we have the ability to control, how we control it, will change with it. Uh, that was adopted by the city via Resolution 15R 96 to show our support for it. Um, and again, if this option is chosen by voters, then council would have to adopt an ordinance creating those regulations based on the JLUSS that we would impose. Um, and, and what I would say is, there are two parts to that, right? One is the, the actual thing we're regulating. So for example, the most common would be a height restriction, uh, to not conflict with the flight path. But then the question is, if we impose that, how do we regulate it, right? And, and really, the way San Antonio did it is to require folks to come in for approvals or permits from the city prior to commencing construction and/or receiving their certificate of occupancy, right? Because if we just have these regulations and we leave it up to folks to know that, uh, some folks may not know, some folks may ignore it, and, and there's not really a way for us to be able to, to check things like we do now, where we can say, wait, work is going on there, do they have a permit? If they don't have a permit, then we issue a notice violation, get them in for that. Um, and then violations with that, our assumptions would be dealt with the same way, issues of notice of violations and getting them in. But a couple things with regard to the land use regulations, right? And a couple, and we have posted a copy of the most recent JLUSS up on the website, on the page with the special election, so the folks can go through and read that. But it talks about a couple of different, uh, a number of different subzones, and, and in my mind, those subzones really then kind of go to what are the things we would regulate, right? So one is, there's that bird airstrike hazard, um, subzone. You may recall, we had the presentation a couple months ago with JBSA, talking about their mitigation efforts, uh, on those. There's the vertical obstruction zone, right? Things not being built up that create a problem. There's the safety, uh, zone, which is, again, if something were to happen, what's the consequence of that on the ground, right? Again, they want to avoid uses with, with high concentrations of people in the APZ-1 and APZ-2. And then there's that noise component, right? And we've talked about this, that a lot of folks in our community, whether they live in the ETJ or whether they live in the city, may have moved here because of some tie to Randolph. They may have worked there, they may view the, the noise of planes as something that kind of comes with the territory, right? But we've also heard folks from JBSA say, but as our community grows and as we get more people moving in to the city or in our ETJ or surrounding areas who don't have that connection, they tend to go out, they shop for a home on the weekend, they purchase a house, it's great, they're trying to put the baby down Monday afternoon, and all of a sudden, they hear that thing overhead going, what, what is that? Right? And so that noise creates an issue as well. And, and so generally, with regard to enforcement of applicable strategies within the JLUSS related to, they tend to be zoning and subdivision regulations, right? So it's through the things we typically do through zoning or subdivision regulations that would do that. So again, density controls, like we see in the APZ-1 and APZ-2, you would control that through, uh, lot size and, and, and the plating process. Uh, but there are some other areas of UDC that might be affected. So kind of what I think everybody is, is wanting to get to, and just to get you thinking about it, is what are some of those potential regulations? Not all-inclusive. But again, one of the things would be prohibiting certain land uses within certain noise contours. And again, in the JLUSS, it has those noise contours, uh, based on the flight pattern and what planes are doing at the time, uh, from varying decibel levels. And so part of it is, again, in those higher decibel levels, you don't want things necessarily like residential uses, churches, schools, things like that. So that might be a regulation. The other part is requiring sound attenuation to dampen that noise in structures that are built. We currently have that regulation in the city of Shirts, or the reference in the city of Shirts code of ordinance. Talked a minute ago that, that kind of the most obvious, it's those height restrictions, and that might include the use of cranes over a certain height during construction, right? So it's not just a permanent, it's a temporary as well. Talks about lighting restrictions, uh, it talks about limitations on density as well as limitations on floor area ratio. And again, you may be familiar with that with the APZ-1 and APZ-2. Again, you don't want a building that covers nearly the entire lot. You have a building, but then you've got a lot of open area either for landscape or parking or things like that. There are regulations to... There are regulations to reduce bird airstrike hazards. They could go as far as what kind of landscaping goes in. We also have that typically that we think about it with those wet detention ponds, right? We don't want the water source where birds flying and congregate. And then it can be general restrictions on types of land use, those land uses that may not be as appropriate because they tend to generate dust or glare or things like that, or again, it's just in conflict with the, with the flight pattern. And so what I would say is, we're not asking you to give us a final decision tonight. We've really just sort of started that conversation to get you, you thinking about it. In part because we do want the opportunity, as much as they may not think we do, but I appreciate the five residents, it appears who are here for this, we want to hear their thoughts on it, right? We want them to kind of have an understanding of why we're going about it, what we have the ability to do. And ideally, as I think we typically try to do things in Shertz, we try to find a win-win, something that works for the city, something that works for Randolph, and something that works for those property owners. And so as Sheila mentioned, we're holding those two public hearings. With those public hearings, we'll talk through this again and get into some more specifics. We want to hear what those residents have to say. A bit of the thing that we might suggest is that after, or starting after that first public hearing, staff will start putting that down on paper to be able to have something that people can read and point to that's concrete to say, these are the things that we would anticipate regulating, how we would regulate, what those regulations might be. And then that way, people have it to react to the second public hearing in September, and then from that, really get some direction from council to try to put something down on paper to say, this is really what we're talking about, so that folks out there can make an informed choice with the election, with what they think, much like council tries to do with your items kind of going forward. But, but with that, I'll say a couple of things. As people have called and asked about this, my impression is why council has called this election is because particularly as the state has reduced the ability for local governments, both city and county, to regulate some of the thing with land uses. And given how they've restricted the ability of the city to annex property, and, and in certain parts of our community, even to, to, for folks to exit the ETJ, and then we have no control, and that still impacts the city. The concern is, is that with those changes and with the growth and development, that things would start happening and occurring that would be problematic for Randolph. And, and that there's, part of it is the city with the state law has the ability to step in, and that their goal was really to step in and make sure nothing happens that creates a problem down the road that we say, ah, that's really problematic, and we could have, we could have done something going forward. And, and that's really what we're after. It's not so much that there's something terribly egregious out there now that we need to find a way to get in and stop residents. But my impression is that council wants to fully but reasonably step into this, meaning if there's something in the JLUSS that causes a concern, that there's a land use related to, council is, is desirable to step in and deal with that. Doesn't make a lot of sense to go through this, and we're going to tackle three fourths of the thing, but we're going to leave a fourth of it not done, and then, then we have problems with that. It's almost, almost kind of why bother. But at the same time, I don't get the impression, much with council does, that they really want to push the limits of what this means. You could clearly make arguments about a number of things that have taken to an extreme you could try to justify. I don't think council's intending to do that. For instance, we had a conversation about extension of roadways, and theoretically, council could justify, and you already have the ability to do this, going in and using eminent domain to build roads that are needed, but doing it under the guise of the JLUSS, because the JLUSS talks about the need to move traffic in and around JBSA. That's not really the kind of land use that we're thinking about, though we want to be cognizant of that development, that we don't have development occur that's too intensive, that our thoroughfare plan is not ultimately designed for, right, and creates a problem for us. That's my impression of where council is. And so again, what staff is recommending is that we come back with the public hearing, that the nods I'm sort of seeing, that's how we step in, staff will provide kind of a list of what those land uses are, a reference to where they're talked about in the JLUSS, and what that regulation might look like, right? So we can show the sound contour map and say, these would be the uses in this contour, it wouldn't be allowed, this would be here, we can show some of the height slope for folks. We then have the opportunity for folks to react to that, give us their initial feedback, and then they can take it home and digest it and start sending emails and calling staff to say, this is what we think. We come back a couple of weeks later, present a refined version of that, again, hear feedback on, on how we heard them, what council thinks, and then try to come back at that meeting in October with kind of, all right, here's how we think this looks like. It's always subject to change, but that's where we think we are. And so that's what staff's looking for at the end of the day. So the main thing I want to understand is that, staff's impression is that since council has said this is an important enough issue to call for the election, you want us to regulate all the things that need to be regulated and do it in a way that protects JBSA, but has the minimum negative implications for property owners as possible. Do it in a reasonable way, but not use this to overreach. And that's kind of what we wanted to get out of night, kind of what we wanted to hear from folks. Again, this is an opportunity, and I appreciate you staying late, I'll give you my card so we can start making contact and going forward. But with that, I think that's kind of all we had, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
All right, council questions? Councilmember Westbrook.
Yes, sir. So how will you ensure I try to get the most, how to say, feedback from the individuals in that green area? You're going to send out mails, phone calls, what are we doing?
So here, here's what we've done. So as Sheila noted, we sent out, they sent out a letter to all of those property owners, and it goes to the owner, it doesn't go to the resident, it goes to the, to the owner. And then we've started getting calls for that. And I will say this, and I mean this sincerely, we do have a few folks who are fairly active in the community, some of you may remember from a while back, and we are hoping that they will help us out by informing their neighbors and telling their neighbors about this, right? So we sent the notices, but then we're kind of relying on those folks who, who, who step up to step in and reach out and tell, tell their neighbors and give us feedback, right? Because, you know, it's just like we heard tonight with the budget. We're a community of 45,000 people, and, and again, appreciative of the folks that did stay and chime in on that, but that's kind of how we'll work it, this way. We'll rely on those folks who have engaged and will continue to gauge. And I think, you know, I've gotten about five or six folks who've, who've reached out to me at this point, and then we've walked them through the process, told them how they can do it. And again, I assume tomorrow, after folks watch the video, I'll get a few more calls and emails and things like that. Again, it's also been helpful, as I've talked to folks, things that they've asked about. For instance, you know, what about some of those, depending on which way the vote goes, and, and Sam and Emily have been a big help, pulling together information that we'll put up on the website about what we do with home-based occupation. So if somehow it went the first route and they were annexed, what does that mean for somebody who lives there and works? Well, we can give them those regulations that we currently have. We can also give them information that Emily pulled together about, again, with the state law changes, folks who own animals or livestock or engage in farming and ranching, and how they're protected under state law and to what degree. So as we hear from folks, we'll start pulling that information together and posting it up, up to, to give them the opportunity to understand where we're headed.
Councilmember Guerrero.
Mr. James, did you say they're going to have two, or we're going to have two public hearings in October?
No, we're having two public hearings in September.
September, okay.
And I appreciate Sheila doing it right. So September 2nd and September 16th, we're going to hold those public hearings. So again, to be blunt, we're going to have to work really hard and really fast because of the short timeframe on that, and that's, you know, just the nature of the, of the beast with it, if we will. And then again, I would say if we come back to in October with a, with a final version of what that looks like, staff is probably going to propose that we do that as a public hearing, even though we don't have to, because, you know, again, and I've talked about this before, you know, we, we do want to hear what folks think about it, and by having that public hearing, even though we don't have to, it lets them react, tell you what they think, and you're not left to sit up there going, God, it'd be nice to hear from folks. You have the ability to hear from them.
Thank you.
Counsel, any other comments? Thank you, Mr. James.
Okay, thanks, counsel.
All right, we'll move on. We have two closed session. Item number 18, the city council will meet in closed session in accordance with Section 551 dot 071 of the Texas Governmental Code to receive legal advice from its attorney regarding the impact of recent legislative changes to legal requirements associated with land use matters. And item number 19, the city council will meet in closed session under Section 551 dot 074 of the Texas Governmental Code Personnel Matters to conduct annual evaluation of our city manager, Mr. Steve Williams. The time is now 9:57.
...
Okay, the time is now 11:29. We reconvene after our closed session. Our start time on item number 20 is reference item number 18. The recent updates, legislative updates, our start time was 10:05, end time was 10:17. No action required. Item number 21, reference item number 19, our city manager's evaluation. Start time was 10:20, end time was 11:28. There's two items that are required. Do I have a motion to accept a new severance package for our city manager?
So move.
Do I have a second? Okay, council, we'll go ahead and start the vote.
Aye.
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 And second action is the contract, renewal contract for three years for our city manager. Do I have a motion to accept a new three-year contract for our city manager?
So move.
Second.
A motion made by Councilmember Watson, second by Councilmember Brown. Any other comments? And we'll go ahead and start the vote.
Aye.
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 And the last one is the pay increase for our city manager of 1% COLA. Do I have a motion to increase the compensation of 1%?
So move.
Do I have a second? Motion is made by Councilmember Watson and second by Councilmember Brown. Counsel, any comments? Please cast the vote.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
And all these motions were with the effective date of August 19th. If you can make note of that, please. Okay, council, all right, we'll move on. Counsel, any possible updates or information requested from staff? Be none. Counsel, any possible items you'd like to place on the future agenda? None, okay. Announcements, Mayor Pro Tem Brown.
Nothing tonight, sir.
Councilmember Davis.
Yes, sir, I had the pleasure of attending the Housing Authority meeting this past week.
Nothing at this time.
Councilmember Macaluso.
Nothing to share.
Councilmember Guerrero.
Yes, I attended the VFW breakfast, and I recommend it to everybody. You do get a lot of food, and it was really good. I enjoyed it. 20th of September is the next one.
Councilmember Westbrook.
Yes, I attended an opening for the Chamber, an orthopedic practice, offer 1518, and also attended the Northeast Partnership Luncheon.
Councilmember Hayward.
Yes, I attended the Main Street meeting, the Northeast Partnership Luncheon, and the Chamber Luncheon today. That is all.
All right, thank you. The time is now 11:32. We stand adjourned.